Welcome everyone to the July 12, 2023 meeting of the Westwood Select Board pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023. On March 29, 2023, Governor Maura Healey signed into law and act making appropriations for the fiscal year 2023 to provide for supplementing certain appropriations for the fiscal year 2023 to provide for supplementing certain existing appropriations and certain other activities and projects. This act includes an extension until March 31, 2025 of the remote meeting provisions. The July 12, 2023 Select Board meeting will be conducted via remote participation by the board. I hereby grant permission to Westwood Media Center to record the meeting. Is there anyone else who wishes to record the meeting? I see no affirmative responses. And so we will head right into the chair's updates. First, I want to give an update with respect to the proposed conservation restriction with Hail Education. I want to update you that per the direction of the board, the town administrator is continuing in the negotiations of the terms of the proposed CR, and it is expected that a draft reflecting recent changes will be made available by mid-August, at which time it will be posted for residents in Westwood and Dover, and to be discussed at our August Board meeting with a view toward having a public forum to discuss in early September. With respect to the fire union, we are very pleased that we have resolved their contract. The following statement was jointly released by the Town of Westwood and the Westwood Firefighters Local 1994 on June 29, 2023. The Town of Westwood and firefighters local 1994 are pleased to announce that earlier this morning, the Town of Westwood and Westwood Firefighters Local 1994 have signed a new collective bargaining agreement. We would like to thank the Joint Labor Management Committee for their assistance in coming to a resolution that is mutually beneficial to the Town of Westwood and the members of Westwood Firefighters Local 1994. Both the Town of Westwood and Westwood Firefighters Local 1994 are pleased to continue providing dedicated service to the residents of Westwood. I would like to thank my fellow member, Joe Prevatera, who recently attended an event at Hail this week with Governor Healey and the Lieutenant Governor. I certainly would have liked to have attended, but COVID-19 is visiting me this week, so that prevented that. But Joe, thank you very much for being there. And next, want to turn to our police accreditation report. Before I do that, I would like to acknowledge that Sergeant Paul Sicard will be retiring from the Westwood Police Department at the end of this month. Sergeant Sicard has served for 36 years on the Westwood Police Department, and before that, served for seven years as a police explorer with the Westwood Police Department. He has, we want to thank him for his tremendous service to the town, and we wish him all the best in his well-deserved retirement. And with that, we have with us Chief Silva. Welcome, Chief. Thank you for being here. We congratulate you on receiving the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission Award for achieving full accreditation, and would love to give you a chance to let folks know what that means and what you had to do to earn that recognition.
Sure. Super excited to do that, Madam Chair. Thanks for having me. Thank you to the board. I'd like to echo my thanks to Sergeant Sicard, although him working in Westwood certainly predates my arrival, and I could tease him and say it predates my birth, but that's not true. But he's given us, you know, great service in a variety of roles over the years. One of my favorite personal memories of Sergeant Sicard is when he would give tours of the station. He, like I, am a big fan of doing that. He used to do that as one of his jobs, and he used to show our preschoolers and our young residents in particular, all the things that we carry. And when he asked them what the police would do, he would sometimes, you know, the kids would sometimes say, well, they arrest bad guys. And then he would then show them all the things that we carry and all the things that we do, like life jackets and ropes to get people out of the water and medical equipment to help them. And he said, I'm going to show you a piece of equipment. You tell me if this helps catch bad guys or help people. And the moral of the story was that 99% of the things that we do and that we carry is to help people. And the only thing that he had in the car to quote unquote arrest bad guys was his handcuffs. So I thought it was a powerful message, and I always appreciated it. And he, like I, share a love for educating our young people and interacting with them. So congratulations to Sergeant Sicard on a wonderful career here in Westwood, and I thank him for his service. Going to the accreditation, a very exciting thing. We've been talking about trying to get Westwood accredited since really the days of Chief Haas, who was here for 12 years, and Chief Chase was here for 10 years. And then I'm in, you know, my 10th year, of course. And it, you know, that's a testament to the fact that how difficult it is to achieve, particularly when you have some hurdles in place, like the structure, the facility, the requirements to retain evidence safely. There are just under 500 standards, optional and mandatory, to achieve the best practices for the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission. It's modeled after the national accreditation standard, which some people may have heard about, CALEA. And so the Commission for Law Enforcement Accreditation. And but it's specifically tailored to Massachusetts law, because as we know, all the laws are different. It governs things like policies, practices, equipment, high-risk operational things that police officers do to low-risk operational things that we do, how to greet the public, how to store evidence, the facilities and the equipment that we have. But it's very rigorous, but it's something that the town can be very proud of. We set about this task just over a year ago, and we achieved step one of accreditation, which is called certification. And they told us at that time, as I mentioned before at a previous meeting, when the assessors came, many of them have been doing this for, you know, 20, 30 years, professional assessors from the Accreditation Commission. They said it was one of the best assessments they've ever done. And that's a testament really to the staff and the support that we get from the town, from our residents and our town officials. So I really don't want to take the credit for that. But it's really tremendous. And we then proceeded immediately to full accreditation. Again, that can take, and it has taken years. But from the time that we started, once we knew our facilities were in place, we were about to do this before COVID started. And then, as we know, the world stopped. So once we were clear to do assessments and evaluations, the time we started to the time we received full accreditation, it was not even two years. So that's extraordinary. It's quite a testament to our accreditation manager, Sergeant Michael Delala, who really was the point person for that. But the whole staff, Madam Chair, works on that. We engage the police officers that are involved in every level of the operations, not only to get buy-in, but to make sure that what we're proposing on paper makes sense in practice, and we merge that to the best practices in the industry. So it's a great vote of confidence for the town and for the agency. It's not only a liability shield or in a source of pride, but an absolute endorsement that our police department is engaged in the best practices and professional policies in the industry. So very proud of that.
Well, as you should be. And congratulations again to you and the entire team that worked on this. It truly is a testament to the safety that you provide to the residents of Westwood. So thank you so much.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
All right, we are going to move into scheduled action. Our first agenda item of scheduled action pertains to a discussion of potential revisions to the Westwood's MBTA Community Action Plan, and we are going to be welcoming in our colleagues on the planning board to have a joint discussion. So we will give them a few minutes to come in, or a minute here to come in, and then we will have the planning board open their meeting, and then we will have our discussion. So welcome, everyone. Hi, Chris, Ellen.
You.
Amanda.
Good evening.
Good evening. Josh, good to see you. Hi, Kate and Phil.
Hi, how are you?
Great, thanks. And we've got Elijah. I think that's everyone. Yes?
We also have Amanda Wolf, our Housing and Land Use Agent.
Yes. Hello, Amanda. Great to see you. Ellen, I will turn it over to you to open up your meeting.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the July 12, 2023 meeting of the Planning Board. First, we'll take a roll call vote to introduce board members and staff. Chris.
Here.
Kate.
Here.
Josh.
Here.
Phil.
Here.
And I am here as well. This meeting is recorded by Westwood Media Center and broadcast live on local cable television Comcast Channel 12 and Verizon Channel 42. Meetings are also live on the Westwood Media Center's YouTube channel. If you're interested in joining the meeting via Zoom, you can find the login directions in the planning board meeting notice that is posted to the calendar section of the town's webpage at https://www.townhall.westwood MA.us/ . In this remote meeting format, residents and guests may participate in several ways. Attendees should raise their hand and wait to be unmuted and recognized to speak over the Zoom meeting application or from a telephone dial-up. We will be able to hear you but not see you. Additionally, comments may be submitted by email or regular mail prior to the meeting. When we come to that part of the meeting, I will remind everyone of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. And again, it's great to have all of you here, joining us. Nora, I think you are taking the lead on this discussion?
Yes, so
Welcome.
Thank you. So as everyone is aware, back in 2020, the legislature passed an act that was eventually signed by the governor in January 2021, which established the MBTA Communities Law. This is MGL Chapter 40, Section 3A. It's actually a very, very short law. It just has three paragraphs. The first one defines, doesn't even define an MBTA community, but says that all MBTA communities will have to adopt a district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is allowed by right, and that that housing cannot be age-restricted and must be suitable for families with children, and must have a minimum density of 15 units per acre, and not be located further than one-half acre from an MBTA or bus station. The second paragraph of that law sets forth penalties if a community does not adopt a district of reasonable size. There were only three penalties listed in the law. There would be ineligibility of grants for the Housing Choice Program, the Local Capital Projects Fund, and the Mass Works Infrastructure Grant Program. And then the third paragraph of that law gives the Department of Housing and Community Development the authority to promulgate guidelines to determine if an MBTA community is in compliance with Section 3A. So that's it, very simple, very straightforward. There are 177 communities that are considered mass MBTA communities that this would apply to, and Westwood is one of those. When the law was first passed, within six months of the passage, by July of 2021, the planning board set to work with the Housing Partnership, evaluating all properties within half a mile of three T-stations: the Route 128 Station and Islington Station in Westwood, and the Dedham Corporate Station in Dedham, which has part of its half-mile radius in Westwood. And after a thorough review of eligible properties, the planning board proposed the Mumford District, the Mixed-Use Multifamily Residential Overlay District. And they designed that to include three areas: two at University Station covering the Gables Apartments and the Westwood Place Condominiums, and one on Everett Street that covers 22 Everett Street, which is an area that is now involved in an application for a development under this new Mumford Zone. So after the planning board proposed this and supported it at its own hearings and at hearings before the Finance and War Commission, it went to town meeting, and in May of 2022, it received majority approval of town meeting. Then in November of 2022, it was approved by the Attorney General, and that section of our bylaw took a bet. On January 31, 2023, the all MBTA communities were required to submit an action plan to the Department of Housing and Community Development. We submitted a plan, or I submitted a plan on behalf of the town on January 30. And that plan described the process that the planning board had taken thus far to establish the Mumford District, which is, contains a total of 16.16 acres. And it was stated in that plan that the planning board, the Select Board, Finance and War Commission members, and various residents, speaking at the public hearings for that adoption of that district, all considered that the adoption of the Mumford District established a district of reasonable size and compliance with the letter and the spirit of the law. We understood at that time it did not satisfy the Department of Housing and Community Development guidelines, which by then had called for 50 acres in each of the MBTA communities. So then, early this year in April, I believe it was, I had a meeting with DHCD staff where the staff members expressed concern about the action plan as it was written. They felt it was too vague, because the action plan expressed that the the planning board had adopted, had paused the adoption of the Mumford District, and intended to go back and look at other properties, and would consider increasing the size of the Mumford District, proposing the town meeting increase the size of the Mumford District to a minimum of 50 acres to meet the guidelines. It proposed that the planning board would look at that and determine if it was appropriate, if it was desirable, they would put forth another amendment to town meeting to consider an expansion of this district. The staff from DHCD did not think that was sufficient, and made it clear that we would not receive interim compliance certification of the action plan unless it was amended. I explained that I could not amend the action plan without hearing from the planning board and the Select Board in a public session, that they were willing to do just that. I believe that the action plan that was submitted accurately represented the statements that had been made up until that point. So then we had another meeting. This one, Town Administrator Chris Coleman and Town Council Pata Hearn attended. It involved DHCD staff members again, and it also involved the Lieutenant Governor. And I believe that meeting was in May. And at that meeting, Chris Coleman committed to having this meeting tonight to bring together the Select Board members and the planning board to discuss the action plan, and to consider amending that action plan to clearly state that the planning board will pursue an expansion of the Mumford District to a minimum of 50 acres in order to achieve interim compliance with DHC guidelines, DHCD's guidelines under the MBTA Communities Law. What that would do is it would give us until December 31, 2024, to actually have town meeting adopt and the Attorney General's Office approve an expanded Mumford District. That would have to be at least 50 acres. So this is an opportunity tonight for the Select Board members and the planning board members to discuss whether that is something that you would like to request that we revise that action plan.
Thank you, Nora. Is there anyone else who wanted to present on this? Okay. Well, Ellen, I would turn it over to you for a discussion with the planning board in terms of your thoughts. I think what is being proposed here is a very narrow action of telling the state that Westwood will consider expanding the zone. Am I correct with that, Nora?
So the way the action plan is written now, I think that's exactly what it says, that Westwood will consider expanding the zone. There, so I can redo the steps that are stated in the plan. Step one, evaluate the existing Mumford Overlay District. Step two, public outreach for expansion of the Mumford Overlay District if desired. Step three, develop zoning amendment for expansion of the Mumford Overlay District if desired. Step four, apply DHCD's compliance model to test for density and unit capacity. And then step five, hold Planning Board public hearing and Finance and War Commission public hearings for expansion of the Mumford Overlay District if desired. So what we've done so far is say that we would look into it, we would consider it, and if it was desirable, we would propose town meeting adopt an expansion. It's those "if desired" language that's in there that's of concern. The Department of Housing and Community Development and the Lieutenant Governor have asked that we do more than say that we will do, we will consider expanding it, and we will expand it if desired. They want us to state flat out that we intend to bring an article to town meeting and pause the adoption of an expanded Mumford Zone that will be a minimum of 50 acres and otherwise compliant with their guidelines.
Let me ask Town Council, if I may, for him to weigh in on this as far as what potentially might happen. Were we not to take some action now?
I received a phone call from the Attorney General's Office. I think it was in May or June. It was a collaborative conversation, but the public statements of the new Attorney General are clear. She has stated publicly that towns that don't comply with this zoning process could be subject to civil rights violations, actions. So there's always time to litigate. There's not always time to resolve a matter. So I still think we have it within our control to pick the spots that we want. I think we are very serious about picking zoning that will actually end up in housing. Other communities are not. They're picking zoning that will not end up in housing, so they meet the 50-acre minimum requirement. I think we take it to a higher level. But I would, it would be my opinion that we should take another, at least take another look to see if we can zone additional acreage to try and get, if, to 50, or at least closer to 50 at this point in time.
So what is the language change that we are considering in amending the letter?
So there are a couple places. All of those statements that were qualified by "if desired", the "if desired" words would be removed. Then further on, there's a section that explains why Westwood has done what it's done and what their intention is. We say that it's the Westwood Planning Board's intention to accept and process an anticipated application for a Mumford special permit over the coming months. And then after that permit is approved, then we reevaluate. And we say, following the issuance of that Mumford special permit and development thereunder, the Westwood Planning Board will determine whether it wishes to propose an expansion to the Mumford Overlay District to further increase the size of that district. That's the other concerning language, that we will determine whether it wishes to propose an expansion. They would like that change to say, Westwood will propose an expansion to further increase the size of the district to a minimum of 50 acres.
Okay. Let me turn this over to our friends at the planning board for your thoughts.
Thank you, Mary Ann. I will open this up to board comments and questions. I see, Josh, you have your hand up?
Good. Thank you. I guess my main concern with the comments, as I heard, was that there's some language in there that makes it sound like we can just make this happen. I mean, we can propose it, but the three-quarters majority of the town has to accept it. So regardless of what we propose, we still may not be in compliance, right? Like, am I understanding that correct?
So Josh, point of order. This is, when this was passed, it only requires a majority at town meeting, not a two-thirds majority.
But the Department of Housing and Community Development does understand that it has to go to town meeting and be passed by town meeting. That they're looking for the action plan to say that we will bring an article to town meeting with an expansion to a compliant zone. So I had explained in my meeting with DHCD staff, and I believe we explained it again in the meeting with the Lieutenant Governor, that it has always been the planning board's intention to reevaluate and to consider additional districts and to adopt zoning that it believed is appropriate in Westwood that would achieve greater housing, not just adopting a district with 50 acres, but proposing a district that would have sufficient land area and was located in positions that would likely lead to the adoption or the creation of new housing. So that has always been the planning board's intention. But that intention, because it is qualified by statements, if it's appropriate, if it's desirable, that is not good enough.
So just to my understanding, if we propose, if we change your language, and we bring an article to town meeting with even the contiguous or whatever, you know, plan we have in place, those 50 acres, if the town meeting votes down, we are still in compliance?
No, then we lose compliance. So there's, it's a two-step process. If we amend our action plan and say that we intend to bring this article to town meeting, we will be granted interim compliance, and that will be valid through December 31, 2024. And if by that date, we haven't actually adopted a zone of, that qualifies with the guidelines, then we will be, have our interim compliance revoked. If we do have a zone in place by then, then we will achieve district compliance, which is a more final approval.
And for this next iteration, what would the threshold be for adoption at town meeting?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
The adoption of the new zoning of a different area. What would the threshold be at town meeting?
The threshold vote, are you saying?
The vote, simple majority.
Simple majority, okay.
Yes.
And if I may, I just want to clarify, with respect to the state informing us that we are out of compliance currently, they have also indicated that we are not eligible for grants as a result of that?
True. And it's not just the three grants that are specifically listed in the statute. They are saying that we are ineligible for any grant, that they would choose to consider our compliance with this bylaw relevant to state funding. So they could choose to use, each grant has qualitative criteria that require statements from various state agencies, and DHCD would state that the town is out of compliance with this bylaw, and therefore should be ineligible for other grants as well. So there's the three, the three criteria that are in the statute itself, three grant programs that we know we would not be eligible for. Then there's any other state or federal grant program that requires any comment from a state agency. And then on top of that, we have the Attorney General's Office, who has indicated that they may take civil rights action against the town.
And were we to submit a letter stating that we will propose an expansion, we will be in compliance and therefore eligible for all grants?
We will, we would achieve interim compliance. So we would have to resubmit the action plan with those changes. DHCD would have to review it again. Whether they ask for additional changes or not would remain to be seen, but those are the only changes they've asked for at this point. And they have indicated that with those changes, we would be found to be in interim compliance that would allow us to remain eligible for grants and to stay out of the crosshairs of the Attorney General's Office under civil rights violation through December 31 of 2024.
Sorry, I didn't mean to hijack the planning board meeting. I just wanted to clarify that point.
Not a problem. Excuse me, that's, it's always helpful to have extra input. Kate, it's like, I'm sorry, Josh, did you have any other questions before I, okay, sorry, Kate?
Thanks. I had a couple of questions. So do we know, Nora, for, I'm just going to take my hand down, do we know if we would be required to find contiguous parcels?
So the current guidelines, which have been revised through last October, require Westwood to have a total of 50 acres. At least 25 acres have to be within a half a mile of a train station, and at least one portion of the district must be a minimum of 25 contiguous acres. Other sections of the district could be made of land masses that are at least five acres. So you'd have to have at least 25 of the 50 acres in one, one piece with contiguous parcels, separated by roads or railroads, but otherwise contiguous. one piece, uh, with contiguous parcels separated by roads or railroads, but, uh, otherwise contiguous. And then the rest would have to be in minimum five acre zones.
Okay, and, and so, so and then we could have interim, um, compliance until such time as we do not get this proposal passed by town meeting, and then we are no longer in compliance.
Right, so the interim compliance would be set to go through December thirty first, twenty twenty four. However, if we brought an article to town meeting next May and it failed at that town meeting, our interim compliance would be revoked.
Hmm, so we would, so, so if we were going to propose something, the latest we would have would be fall of twenty twenty four to, to have an airtight proposal for the town.
I, I think it would actually be the May twenty twenty four meeting, because we would not only need to have town meeting approve it, but we would then need to have the, or town meeting would adopt the bylaw, and then we would have to have it approved by the Attorney General's Office. So our fall town meeting schedule will be too late. We would not be able to achieve Attorney General compliance, um, Attorney General approval of a bylaw amendment in, before December thirty first. So I think this would be something we would need to bring to the May twenty twenty four town meeting.
Okay, so the state is essentially saying to us, swing for the fences, don't get a triple, better be a home run, and fast, you're on deck, like it's now. That is, um, worthy of discussion. I appreciate the discussion.
Thank you, Kate. Uh, Phil?
Hi, can I just, oh, let me lower my hand. Um, what can you, Pat, can you refresh me on the, the existing stock issue? How does existing stock, if that was, uh, folded into the Mumford District, would that assist or not assist?
I'm going to defer to Nora on that one, uh.
Ex- yeah, existing construction, um, the fact that we have, uh, over the last ten years, we've achieved four hundred eighty units of multifamily housing and another over fifty units of, uh, two-family housing. That doesn't matter. None of those units are, are counted towards this. What they need to do, what we would need to do is show that we have a minimum of fifty acres and that the land that's included within that minimum of fifty acres could produce at least eight hundred and seventy units of, um, multifamily housing. Now, that doesn't mean that we need to take down properties that we have, and they do not need to be developed under the zone, they just need to be available for development.
But what you're saying is the new, the existing or pre, uh, the prior approvals of housing stock would not fold in or meet some of the thresholds, is that correct, Nora?
That's, does not help us.
In fact, they go the other way, because what, by adopting those, um, by creating those new units that we've created over the last ten years, we've raised our housing unit count. And that's what our required, um, new multifamily units are based on. Our town is required to have fifteen percent of its total housing units as multi, as available to be developed as multifamily units under this zone. Um, so if we had not developed those over five hundred units of multifamily housing, we would have that much less that fifteen percent would be taken of. So there's, it's, we don't achieve any, um, kudos for, for the actual development of, of multifamily housing units.
Okay, that, that was my first reaction. Uh, my next one is with respect to other properties that might be within the di- the distance parameter, but are either existing properties or on there or not. If they're designated, does that assist us even though the housing stock does not change? In other words, um, does existing housing in X, Y, Z various lots, if those get changed?
As an example, so if we look at the, uh, Pulte condos, Westwood Place condos, there are a hundred units
Exactly.
parcel there, that's greater than fifteen units per acre development. But we are just zoning the land that they sit on and
Yeah.
we're making our calculation of units, they just apply fifteen units per acre to that land. So you don't count a hundred units, you count the number that you could get under this new zoning.
So you don't get the, you don't get the upside either?
You do not.
Okay.
You do not. Now, now the town would have the option, when it proposes a new, um, zoning amendment, they would have the option to create very different districts. So instead of just having the Mumford Zone, you could have Mumford one, Mumford two, Mumford three, and you could have increased density allowable by right in some of those districts. So if you chose to, if you wanted to get that number, um, you want to get more units on fewer acres, you could propose and DHCD could approve an option where you had greater than fifteen unit densities on certain parcels. So that's an option as well. But either way, you need to get to eight hundred and seventy units and a minimum of fifty acres.
So for interim compliance, we have to delete if desired essentially across the board. And then move expeditiously for May twenty twenty four. And then even then need to get approval, because if we get a, if we get a thumbs down at the meeting, we're gonna be in non-compliance regardless.
Right, so, so what this does is it buys you time. Um, and I, I don't think the Planning Board will act any differently than it would have acted if we weren't having this discussion tonight as far as proposing a district that makes sense for Westwood and moving forward with it. It's just that we would need to say that it is our intention to adopt a district a minimum of fifty acres.
Okay, um, that's all I have for now. Good answer. Thank you, Nora.
Uh, if I may, Ellen, I'm so sorry, I, I should have, this was the last part of my question. How unique is our position here? Um, not that what we do is determined by what anybody else does, but are, are we the only town being told to remove the if desired and just swing for the fences?
I can't definitively answer that there are no other towns in our position, but I can say that Westwood was called out in an article that was fed, um, to, to single out Westwood as a town that was choosing not to comply, uh, which I don't believe is, is what we did at all. I believe we described compliance, um, as we thought it was appropriate. Um, but I believe that there are a number of towns, um, that I've been in communication with representatives who filled out their action plans, who simply stated, yes, we will, we will go forward and we will adopt a district of the minimum size required to meet the guidelines. And that is their intention, and they did not qualify it, and they received interim compliance by not qualifying their statements.
Okay, that's very helpful, thank you.
I can also provide a little more insight on that question. Um, I don't know if we're the only one that submitted a plan that was non-compliant, but there are also towns who have outright said, we're not writing any plan and are in, um, a much worse situation than we are.
There's been news articles, uh, regarding some of these towns. I, I've looked and seen there's a number of towns that are, are probably, uh, either at loggerheads or, or behind us. But we seem to be the, the first one, as far as I could find, that has submitted a plan, but was deemed non-compliant.
No, I think that's correct. I've been, I've been contacted by one or two attorneys who are, are stating they are not going to submit a plan and are staying, but I believe they're gonna stay the course.
You know, in addition to Westwood being called out as the first one to have its action plan found non-compliant, I think it's worth stating that Westwood was also one of the very first towns to achieve a, a zoning district, to receive town meeting approval of a zoning district that is, that does comply and is specifically designed to address this law.
And I think you can take it a step further. We're one of the first communities that look like we have a project that may actually get units to put people into.
A, and even a step further to say that our Planning Board invested countless hours and, uh, was very thoughtful in what it presented, uh, to the town. Um, a, a, and if I may, Rob, I saw your hand is up. I just want to ask one question, if I may, uh, to Pat and Nora. Just getting back to the grants that potentially are at risk, uh, do you think, uh, that could include chapter seventy and chapter ninety funds?
I do not think it would include those funds, but I think it could be interpreted to, um, to lessen our chances of approval for more discretionary funds like, um, complete streets funds, green communities funds, funds that Westwood traditionally takes advantage of.
You know, one of the things that happened is, is that we went through a major administrative, administrative change as, at the first of the year, so it's kind of a work in progress. I, I agree with Nora, I don't know that chapter seventy or chapter ninety is at risk at this point in time, but I don't, I wouldn't, I don't have a lot of faith that they might not use that as additional leverage.
The guidelines only address the three grant programs
That's correct.
and then, um, discretionary programs that request DHCD recommendations.
Nora, I had a question for you, if I might. Um, amending the action plan that we submitted, does that require anything other than our signatures?
It doesn't even require your signature. So I submitted the original plan and I would submit the amended plan. Um, when I had a meeting with the DHCD staff and they asked me to just amend it on the spot, my response was I can't do that without hearing from the Select Board and the Planning Board members, because I wrote the original action plan in accordance with statements that were made at public meetings. So I responded to them that I would be happy to amend it if, if the Select Board and the Planning Board direct me to do so. Um, however, after making that statement, the response, the letter that came to, uh, the Town Administrator's Office from DHCD was that we, um, that I refused to amend the plan, and therefore we were determined to be non-compliant.
So the state's original verbiage of using the word reasonable was never to be taken literally, but it was just a placeholder until they replaced it with the fifty acres?
So there's actually, um, there's a, there's a section in the, um, the language of the guidelines, the, uh, the DHCD guidelines that does refer to the reasonableness and the, um, I guess that it's not supposed to be one size fits, meets all. And this is what the Planning Board had been reacting to and what we took into account when we wrote the action plan. And this is still in the current guidelines as of October, um, of twenty twenty two. Says the multifamily zoning districts required by section three A should encourage the development of multifamily housing projects of a scale, density and aesthetic that are compatible with existing surrounding uses and minimize impacts to sensitive land. Reasonable size is a relative rather than absolute determination. Because of the diversity of MBTA communities, a multifamily zoning district that is reasonable in one city or town may not be reasonable in another city and town, city or town. Um, so it was, it was very clearly stated and still is stated in the guidelines that this should not be a one-size-fits-all, and the town should be able to, um, have some discretion over what's reasonable and what's not. That's one section of the guidelines. As you get to the other, it's hard and fast mathematical calculations that determine what Westwood needs to comply with.
I do see that Rob has his hand up. Do you mind if we take his comment, Ellen, during this discussion?
Not at all, I think that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, couple of questions. First, it's just really unfortunate that they're not letting action speak a lot of their words in this case. Um, so if I'm picking up on a little bit of what Phil was saying and what Nora was saying, um, if we were to make the, um, language changes to the action plan that you've laid out, Nora, removing that qualifying language. And we were to create three discrete Mumford Zones that are the existing Mumford Zones. And we were to change the density threshold for each one of those to what the current density is. Is the objective for them to create housing, housing production, which we are doing? Or is it to claim acreage? Because it would seem that if we change those three Mumford Zones to whatever the, um, current density is, and we were to be able to get very, very close to that eight hundred and seventy units, I would think that's the spirit of what this law, given the qualification on the guidelines that you just read, um, is intended to do. Can you provide some guidance there?
So I can read you another section of the current guidelines. Uh, it says zoning ordinances and bylaws typically limit the unit density on individual lots to comply with section three A zoning density requirement. An MBTA community may establish reasonable sub-districts within a multifamily zoning district with different density limits for each subject, subject district, provided that the gross density for the district as a whole meets the statutory requirement of not less than fifteen multifamily units per acre. DHCD will review sub-districts to ensure that the density allowed as of right in each sub-district is reasonable and not intended to frustrate the purpose of section three A by allowing projects of such high density that they are not likely to be construed. So that section seems to leave the door open to that, but there are other sections of the guidelines that are very hard and fast. Must be a minimum of fifty acres must be suitable to allow for the development of eight hundred and seventy units. So the, there are a lot of, um, and I don't know if I call them inconsistency, but questionable sections of the guidelines that are, um, seem to be, don't, don't go together too well. And that's one of the ones where I think the answer to that is, we could propose that and DHCD could accept or not accept.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Phil, looks like you had your hand up again.
Sorry, I was just gonna run with, uh, Rob's comment. Um, it strikes me that we're looking more at acreage in order for compliance. And that's where the point is, and I think that's where we, obviously we have to focus our efforts, uh, to make sure that even where the inconsistencies are being, um, prioritized essentially, we still have to, uh, we have to, we have to go with the, the priorities that they are setting for us in order to enhance our likelihood of success for a May meeting. That's what it seems to me. And if that's, that's the dictate, I think we need to kind of understand where we're going with it and, and focus our efforts in that respect. Uh, that's just my thoughts, I was just following up on.
I, I agree with that. Um, I, I think, uh, you know, the, the, the risk i- in being out of compliance is with respect to losing uh, potential grant funding, uh, which could be significant to the town. Um, not to mention, um, the, the possibility of litigation, uh, which has, uh, been mentioned to our Town Council. And it, it appears that the state is very serious about this. Um, so with that, uh, I'm hoping that we can, uh, move this question. I, I think we, we do need a, a vote from the Planning Board, uh, and then a, a vote from the Select Board.
I actually had a couple of comments before we leave the Planning Board portion of the program. Um, everything that we've heard here, actually, this has been a really excellent discussion, and I think it shows that when we move forward, regardless of what we decide tonight, when we move forward, because we've always said we intended to move forward with looking at this again, we need to really be as careful as we were initially and really, um, cognizant of, of what we're trying to do and where we're going to do it. Uh, I guess the only other comment that I would have, and I echo what Rob said about it, it's, to me, it's really unfortunate and quite frankly disappointing that the state has choose, chosen to respond to Westwood's efforts, which we have made in good faith, and we really wanted to do something meaningful that would result in a project, which we're seeing it has, um, that they've chosen to really make an example of us when we know there are other communities that are saying point blank, they're not even gonna submit an action plan. So that makes me a bit sad. Um, but that being said, we have work to do, and, um, I'm sure our community will come up with something that not only meets the letter of the law, but fulfills the spirit of what this legislation purports to do. That's what I wanted to add.
Ellen, we do have a question from a resident. Um, would it be okay to take that now?
Oh, sure, sure. Um, so I guess, well, actually, yes, if there are no further comments from, or questions from Planning Board, I'll open it up to public comment. Kate?
If I can, if I can just add one thing, um, I do want to say that, you know, for those of you who, who may be just hearing about this really for the first time, that, um, expanded housing in our town centers and having a more walkable community is something we were pursuing because it is part of our comprehensive plan for the town. Our, our desires as a town happen to, um, overlap nicely with what the state was asking us to do, so Our, our desires as a town happen to um overlap nicely with what the state was asking us to do. So we weren't just responding to, to. It, it, it may look to this, to many that we were non-compliant. It happens that we were moving in the same direction as the state at the same time. They just want us to move faster and further than we were moving um on our own. So, so I, I just wanted to, to um. Maybe change the way that that looks for some people and um. And remind people about our comprehensive plan, very important document.
Thank you, Kate. That is a very salient point. Um, okay, were there any other comments or questions from board members? Okay, then I will, I will take. Sorry?
If I, if I can just offer um some insight from the perspective of um what we've been seeing in the housing division. Um, the town has obviously made significant strides towards creating housing. We pointed out twenty-two Everett Street while waiting for approval on another property. Um, but there's still really immense need and I definitely hear the frustration about the law. Um, but like, uh, has already been expressed, our comprehensive plan and housing production plan do call for more housing. I've only been with the town for about two and a half months, but um. In that short time, I've received calls from people who are living in cars. People who work in the town and want to live here, even though they work as caretakers, they don't have opportunities to live here. Um, and also people who are in unsafe situations at home, but can't afford to find housing elsewhere. Um, so I just wanna really emphasize the need that is there. Um, despite, uh, you know, it, it's not always obvious in Westwood. We have a great community. Um, but we really should keep that in mind regardless of what's divided.
Thank you, thank you. That's, I think, uh, both of these boards have historically. Been very supportive of diversifying and expanding our housing stock. So again, to your point, it's not that. We as a community don't want to do this. I think. For me, the issue is how it's being approached with us and how we're being. Handled, for lack of a better way to put it. It, it's feeling confrontational and that to me is really unfortunate. I, I wish it were not the case because I think we did. Move forward as a community, really excited about doing what we were doing and, and in good faith. So. There's just more work to do, but thank you for that reminder. I think it is easy to forget. Okay, um, now, if there are no other comments or questions, I will move to, I see we have one public comment. Um, and I'll take it as part of the planning board hearing. Fran Fusco, Twenty Pine Lane, Nora, wouldn't the number of units be seven fifty, fifteen units times fifty acres, not eight seventy, you stated? Who is going to pay for kids going to our school, twenty thousand dollars per student per year? We are having constraints on our water resources as it is. Our fire department is understaffed and our WPD and traffic. We are a small town. How are we to handle all of this? With conversations about hail, why can't we negotiate acres there since we may possibly be giving them ten million? Okay, so let me take the first part in that. Uh, the, the guidelines, DHCD guidelines. Establish three criteria to be reviewed to establish what is the, the minimum number of housing units that would be um. Eligible to be developed on the land within your zone. The first criteria is based on the number of the existing housing units. So in Westwood, I believe we have five hundred and eighty some odd housing units. As a um community rail community, we are required to have fifteen percent of that total number of units. To, total number of existing units as multifamily units. That comes out, out to eight hundred and seventy. The second criteria is looking at fifty acres at fifteen units per acre, and yes, that does come out to seven hundred and fifty. The third criteria is no greater than twenty-five percent of the total number of acres. They take those three numbers, the, no more than. No more than twenty-five percent of the total number of existing housing units. They take the three units to. Three calculations together and choose the highest one. In Westwood's case, the highest number comes from fifteen percent. Of our existing housing units and that number is eight hundred and seventy. So we're required to have fifty acres. Zoned for a minimum fifteen units per acre. Or more as necessary to achieve eight hundred and seventy units. Um, so what we may end up looking at is different districts, as Rob has suggested, maybe three different districts. That have different densities. Um, I don't. Remains to be seen and we could propose using those three land masses that are already part of the district and getting up to the eight hundred and. Seventy units, but that would require additional density. Right now, those three uh districts together would achieve um. Five hundred and fifty-two units as by right density. So that would not get us to the eight seventy. So we would need to look at additional acreage as well. Um, for the other questions, as far as who pays for this? The um MBTA community's law does not come with funding. So every town is responsible for picking up any costs that are associated with the project. Uh, the developer would obviously pick up some of the costs if, if someone did eventually develop land. So remember, this is just about zoning. It's not about developing. Um, so by zoning the district, we leave ourselves open to a developer choosing to develop it. If a developer comes forward, they are responsible for improvement costs to roadways, to utilities, um, uh, and. Direct costs that are related to the development, but any ancillary costs like for um, for. Uh, school costs, for police and fire service, those would have to be picked up by the municipality. We are not permitted to include um. Uh, linkage fees for by right projects. And then the last question.
Nora, before you answer the last question, I want to caution you. I don't think we should be talking about specific. Uh, parcels of land at this meeting. I think it might be outside the scope of the agenda and we would risk an. A potential open meeting law violation. So I don't think we should be discussing, but, but.
Yes, so.
And I think there'll be plenty of time to discuss. Various parcels as the planning board moves through its process over the next. Timeframe heading towards uh spring town meeting.
Yeah, so I will just point out that it, it. It's less important at this point where that land is eventually chosen to be and more important that it adds up to fifty acres. Um, that's what we're looking at right now, fifty acres with the capacity to develop at least eight hundred and seventy units. So. Wherever the land comes from, it's not, it's not a need for the town to own it and it's not a need for the town to develop it or even to cause a private developer to develop land. It's simply a need to zone the land so that if someone chooses to, they can develop by right multifamily housing.
With the clarification being it needs to be within a half, a half mile of an MBTA.
Well, interesting enough, although the law itself says that all of the land must be, doesn't say how much of it, it says a district of reasonable size. All of which must be within half acre of a um transit station. The guidelines are quite different. In each community is assigned a percentage based on a formula of where those acres have to be. And in Westwood's case, only fifty percent. Of the total fifty acres. So only twenty-five acres would have to be within a half a mile of a transit center. Um, the rest of it could be elsewhere in town. So that's another example of something in the guidelines that's contrary to the law. The law was established to. Provide walkable communities to train stations, but the guidelines actually do quite the opposite. They only require a small. At most fifty percent in our case, um, would have to be walkable. We could put housing units elsewhere.
And, and again, the, the narrow issue before us tonight is whether we will amend our letter. Um, to state that we will propose an expansion. So with that, I, I turn it to you, Ellen.
Um, thank you. I, I would uh invite anyone else who is in attendance, who would uh like to offer public comment. Uh, please feel free to either raise your hand and we can enable you to speak or. Uh, type what you would like to ask into the Q and A. Just please remember to include your full name and address. And I'll give it a minute. I am not seeing any additional questions or comments. So, so Nora, what? As a board, do we need to take action and decide? Yes, I would ask the board to consider voting to um. Uh, recommend that I revise the action plan to show that Westwood will put forth um. A zone of a minimum of fifty acres compliant with DHCD requirements prior to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And that um you recommend that I remove the disclaimers that I read. Uh, to you in the original action plan and, and restate the uh statements in that plan. To confirm that we intend to comply with DHCD guidelines.
And does that need to be a formal motion?
I think it would be best if it was. And Pat, is it acceptable to say so moved?
It is acceptable to say so moved.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, I will take a roll call vote. Kate?
I.
Phil?
I.
Josh? Who's Josh? I do not see Josh. I think we lost him. Um. Chris?
I.
And should we, should we see if we get Josh back? I do feel like it's, uh, if possible, I think it's worthwhile to have the whole board.
He is not currently an attendee.
Okay, um, so Nora, should we just? Okay, I vote I as well.
So perhaps you listed at your meeting that it was a four-nothing vote and. Josh was not in attendance when the meet, when the vote took place. And he's free to make public comment what, how he would vote later on if he so wishes.
Thank you. The only downside, well, one of the downsides to meeting remotely is sometimes things go sideways. And my guess is we lost his connection. Um. Okay, um, I guess, so are we done with our portion of the meeting and we can close motion to adjourn? I believe you can unless the select board has any questions to ask you. Any, any questions from my colleagues for the planning board?
I have one comment. Um, boy, I really want to thank Nora, Pat, Ellen and the entire planning board. You guys. You tried to take the high road, do the right thing. I'm very grateful and appreciative of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
I would echo you on that, Joe.
It's ironic that it was probably the most thoughtful plan presented to the state. And yet.
Exactly.
Happened. It's um, so uh, I, I. Sharing that thanks to all of you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. So motion to close?
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on adjournment? Seeing none, take a roll call vote. Chris?
I.
Kate?
I.
Phil?
I.
And I vote I as well. Oh, someone has a hand raised. So. I don't think that's for us. Uh, anyway, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. All right, so that leads uh to our discussion on this. Uh, any, any further discussion or comments from my colleagues?
Just one question with respect to any grant funding. Given that the, the timing of when a, an interim compliance. Would be found to be non-compliant, there would be no threat of clawback, right? Because we would find ourselves at the midpoint of a fiscal year. And if there were, we could really be in a, in a tough situation. So I, I don't know how. Procedurally that would go, but that, that's my question.
Pat, do you want to take that I, what I can say is that the guideline, the law does not address clawback. The guidelines do not address clawback.
No, that neither addresses clawback. Uh. But. You, I can't guarantee that, that. That they won't use whatever leverage they can to push towns to where they want to go.
And Mary Ann, I think you were right on the mark about the chapter seventy and chapter ninety. I don't think we should. In any way jeopardize that. And Pat, you're right, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know, but. We got a gun to our head and we got to do what we have to do.
We, we also, Joe, I, I, I don't think it can be understated. All this happened is the administrations changed. So we got new policymakers in new places.
Yep.
So. As long as. Moving forward, we try and keep our fing, our fingers on the pulse of what the new policymakers are doing. I think we can make better informed decisions.
Great, thank you.
All right, well, I, I wonder if uh the motion that was made by the planning board, uh, Pat, could that be uh adopted by the select board?
If word properly, yes.
Well, I, I will entertain a motion.
So, so I would say if I were making the motion, I would say I move to adopt the planning board's motion. Um, regarding the MBTA communities. It's just previously passed by them. And someone could say so moved if they wish.
So moved. Second.
Right, uh, roll call vote. Joe?
I.
Uh.
I.
And I vote I as well. Uh, thank you all for that discussion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nora, very much.
Yes, and thank you, Pat. Okay, moving on, we now have a, a public hearing. Uh, regarding an unattended donations center uh with Bay State Books. So I think we need a motion to open the public hearing. Is that right, Pat?
I move that we open the public hearing with respect to the um. Bay State Books unattended donation. Uh, bin.
Second.
Right, roll call. Uh, Joe?
I.
Rob?
I.
I vote I as well. Uh, so we are opening uh our public hearing and with us on this, uh, we have Nora Lockney. Uh, again, our Director of Community and Economic Development. Uh, we have Larry O'Connor from Bay State Books and. Uh, we also have Samantha Hack uh from the Friends of the Library. Thank you all very much for being here. Uh, who would like to take the lead on this?
So I can start by explaining the application. So um. As many of you probably recall, for an unattended donation container in Westwood, there's a process that you have to go through. The first step is obtaining site plan review approval by the select, by the planning board and then a license from the select board. Uh, so Samantha Hack filed an application, I believe on behalf of the Friends of the Westwood Library for a book donation. Container uh that would be located at the senior center. There's currently a loathing drop box. Um, uh, on the senior center property out just outside the parking lot um towards, uh, looking towards the football field. And they would like to locate their book donation, baystatebook.com uh donation container. On that same parcel of land adjacent to the existing box off of the parking area. Planning board, um, the, sorry, the town planner, Elijah Romulus, reviewed this and granted an administrative. Site plan review approval to allow this to go forward. And now it's before you for a request. Uh, that you grant a license to allow this. All of the criteria in the board's rules and regulations for unattended donation containers has been met. Uh, the proposed donation container would have the appropriate signage, um, would have a, a. A phone number and a uh email address to notify Bay State uh books if there was overflow or any problems with the container. So. Um, the recommendation is that the board consider granting the requested license.
Great, thank you very much. And I understand um that donations uh will be made. Um, corresponding to the poundage of books that are dropped in the bin. Is, is that right, Larry?
Yeah, it's five cents per pound.
And with my unscientific research, I've determined that a standard paperback is about a half a pound and a. Uh, hardcover is about a pound, so that can add up pretty quickly.
Yeah, books are heavy.
Um, uh, Sam, anything that you wanted to add?
Uh, not at this time, unless, happy to answer any questions, but um Nora did a great job explaining her ask and so. Thanks for, thanks, thanks for considering it, I guess, but no, no other comments.
Okay, thank you. Well, other than I should say, this is um, the, the monies go to support.
The Friends of the Library who supports, I think everyone here knows, supports the programming uh at the library. So this is a nice way to provide some. Additional funds for all the activities that we sponsor through the library. So. That's the reason, that's the reason behind.
And I believe the site is, is a very appropriate site. The senior center. Has people going to it every day, many of whom have a lot of books to donate. So. has people going to it every day, many of whom have a lot of books to donate. So it's a very appropriately located donation box.
Yes. Larry, if I could ask you, what types of books would be accepted in this bin?
Yeah, we take anything. So literally all books, but then also if people put DVDs, CDs, whatever, encyclopedias. There's no, we don't make any sort of we'll take everything. And also, just, I'll just point out that the bins are all brand new and we like, it's our responsibility to make sure that it always looks good and that it's always clean and we check it every week or more than every week if necessary.
Terrific. Any questions from my colleagues?
None for me.
Let's see if we have any public comments. This is a public hearing, so we want to get any public comments. There may be. I'm not seeing any. I will give it a little longer here. There's any comment or question you have on this, please put it in the chat. I'm not seeing any comments or questions. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
I move the select board approve an unattended donation center license for Bay State Books for a container to be located at the senior center at sixty Manhattan Street and for the electronic signature of the select board to be affixed to the license.
I'll second that motion with the understanding that anyone violates it, we throw the book at them.
Roll call vote. Joe?
I.
Rob?
I.
I vote I as well. Uh, thank you all very much. Good luck, Larry.
Madam Chairman, it's a public hearing. You need to close the public hearing.
I'm not done yet, but yes, thank you. Samantha, thank you very much for being here. Thank you, Nora. I will now entertain a motion to close this hearing.
I move that we close the hearing with respect to Bay State Books on a tape, unattended donation container at sixty Manhattan Street.
Second.
Roll call. Joe?
I.
Rob?
I.
I vote I as well. All right, thank you all again. Moving on, we have for consideration a special one day license, beer and wine for a wedding at Hale. And with us again to present on this is Nora Lockney. And we also have Joel Wood. Nora, are you taking the lead again?
I will, yes. So this is an application for a one day license for a wedding at Hale Reservation, specifically at Cat Rock Field and Pavilion. The date would be August twentieth of two thousand twenty-three. They're proposing approximately one hundred and twenty guests. And they have the required liquor liability insurance, safe alcohol service certifications for the people who will be serving the alcohol. Those are in place. They will have to apply for food permits and a permit for the tent which have not not been applied for yet or hadn't been as of the time I left the office today. So this is something that was reviewed by the Alcohol Review Committee and members recommended unanimously in favor of this. I'll also point out that it was discussed with the police department and determined that a detail would not be required.
Great, thank you very much. Welcome, Joel. Did you have anything to add?
I just wanted to thank Nora and her team for reviewing this and we have the other processes in motion. So thank you. And much obliged.
And then just to point out the date of the event, the timing will be twelve to four and we request that the alcohol license be granted from eleven to five to allow time for setup and takedown.
Great. I have no questions. Rob, Joe, any questions?
None.
Right?
All right, I move the select board approve a special one day license for beer and wine to Joel Wool for a wedding reception on August twentieth, two thousand twenty-three at Cat Rock Field and Pavilion located Hale Reservation from eleven AM to five PM, which includes, as Nora mentioned, time for setup and cleanup. This approval is pending final sign offs by public safety departments and the issuance of a food permit and a tent permit. In addition, for the electronic signature of the select board to be affixed to the special one day license for beer and wine for Joel Wool's August twenty, two thousand twenty-three wedding reception.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call. Joe?
I.
Rob?
I.
I vote I as well. Thank you again, Nora. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with the event. Before we move on to the next item, we do have a comment that I just want to read from Joshua Ames, fifty-two Greenacre Road, who was with us earlier. And he writes, for the public record, I vote I to change language in the action plan to say Westwood will pursue more zoning, removing the if desired sections within the action plan. I will leave it to town council and other folks to figure out how that figures into the planning board record, but wanted to at least read that into the record of our meeting. Having done that, our next scheduled action item is the Fire Department Operational Study and Fire Station One feasibility study. We are going to hear from Criterion Associates. Specifically, I believe Travis Miller at Criterion Associates with respect to the operational study that will be followed directly by a presentation by Dor and Whittier as to the Fire Station One feasibility study. We're going to get a presentation on both of those and then open it up for discussion first by the board, of course, and then to involve the public because the feasibility and the operational study are interrelated. We think it would be best to go through both of them first before we open up the discussion. So we've got a lot of folks here. I see Chief Deckards, Donald Walter from Doren Whittier, Travis Miller, Jason Harris from Doren Whittier, Cassie Plunkett from Doren Whittier, Chip Hitecamp from Doren Whittier. So welcome all of you. Thank you for being here. And I think Travis, we're starting with you. Welcome, and we look forward to your presentation.
Thank you very much. I think in our discussion earlier that somebody from the town side was going to drive the presentation, the PowerPoint deck.
Does somebody have that deck available?
I can bring it up. Hold on.
Thank you, Tish.
Thank you, Tish. So the the presentation by the police chief earlier reminded me that I worked with Chief Haas when the University Place Development was a redevelopment that was taking place for the facilities that were there looking at both police and fire issues in the town of Westwood. But I won't tell you how old I was when I did that because that was, that was some time ago. Thank you, Tish. I appreciate that. You can drop down to the first slide. So Madam Chair and members of the board, Mr. Coleman and and public and other members of staff. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight. I have been doing fire rescue management consulting for almost thirty years. And my, my, my last work with the town of Westwood was a little over fifteen years ago, as I mentioned, looking at the impacts of the the development that's taken place around the Amtrak station and that broader area. We were asked to do two different, to look at sort of two different sets of questions. One was, the first was, where should a rebuilt or renovated or relocated Station One or the headquarters station be located within the town of Westwood? And then secondly, to evaluate some operational impacts, just to make sure that as you looked at the development of that station, that you made sure that you're taking into account both, both current day operational impacts as well as future considerations that you don't build a facility and then find yourselves five, ten, twenty years from now, wishing that you had added something or built something additional on the station at today's cost as opposed to tomorrow's costs. This first map shows the distribution of calls for service that the fire department has handled over the past five years. This was from two thousand seventeen, beginning of two thousand seventeen to the end of two thousand twenty-two. You can see, and if you know the town, you can, I'm sure you have a good sense as to where these clusters of activity are. We look at this because from a perspective of evaluating fire rescue facilities, you're looking at where, given the number of stations that the community can afford or the number of stations that the community needs to have, depending on how you ask the question, the location of this workload can really drive where you should put a facility. And in the past twenty years or so, the fire rescue community nationally and internationally has really come a long way in terms of looking at how do we evaluate locations? Twenty-five, thirty years ago, people would have said, well, every address is important. We have people living at every address. We have a business at every address and so on. But the reality is that if you're spending scarce resource dollars to locate facilities and to staff those facilities, you're better off going someplace that you go five times a day and being able to get there quickly than you are to be able to get quickly to someplace that you might go once every fifteen years or every five years or every three years or something. Next slide, please. Thank you, Tish. So we were asked to evaluate a few different things. The current system, and by system, I mean the current location for Station Two, which, as you know, is a relatively new facility, as well as the current location for Station One, a couple alternatives sort of within that corridor around headquarters. And then we were also asked to look at ignoring what we might own, ignoring where we might have thought about going before. Optimally, where should we go? We look at that across a couple of different kinds of standards. The industry has started to look at fractile performance against four and eight minutes, and we can talk about where those standards come from later if somebody has a question about them. But what fractile means is what percentage of our calls can we get to in four point zero zero zero, et cetera, minutes or less of drive time from our existing facilities? And what can we do in terms of drive time at eight point zero 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 minutes? Four minutes being first unit on scene, eight minutes being the totality of our response, whether that's to an EMS call or a fire call. The standards are roughly the same. The expected response time that we calculate is a weighted average response time, meaning a location that you go to a hundred times gets counted a hundred times in the response time calculation, a place that you've gone to once in the data sample would only get counted once. And as you can see, there are ways to, within the existing corridor area, again, all on High Street, all relatively close to the existing facility. There are ways that you can either maintain or slightly improve the expected response time across the entire system. Tish, you can drop down and we'll go through these next ones pretty quickly. So these maps just show, and I know that the text at the bottom is relatively small for this presentation, but those numbers that are at the bottom are captured in that chart above. What these are showing is just where can we get, the green is the four minutes or less, the pardon me, is the eight minutes less, the yellow is the four minutes or less. You drop down to the next one. And you can see that as you shift locations, different parts of the community toggle in and out. You drop down to the next one. So this is why when we say the area around headquarters is better, Tish, can you go back up to the one before this? So you see how much more area you grab by staying close to headquarters or at headquarters. You can go down again. So by going to Ladder Brook, you lose a ton of land. You also, as an aside, and this is relevant for Station Two as well. If you were doing this as a county, you might find very different locations for these fire stations to be optimal or appropriate. But when you're looking at Westwood as essentially an island, making decisions about where should we as a community best locate our fire stations or our schools or our facilities of any kind, building a station that's essentially located on a neighbor's border is very nice for your neighbor and the mutual aid that you might provide. But it's not necessarily an effective decision with respect to the town itself. Let me drop down to the next one. So optimal location again, you know, if we were to toggle back and forth between this, and we don't have to, Tish, sorry, I'm not trying to tie your fingers out too badly. If we were to toggle back and forth between this and where headquarters is today, you might be able to say, oh, I know what that street is, or I know, that's my house or whatever. But honestly, the distinction between these two is very, very slight, as was shown in the in the numbers themselves. Let me drop down to the next one. So as in, just as an aside, in feeding into Doren Whittier, the location that Doren Whittier is going to talk about makes total sense from a response time perspective, particularly where you've placed Station Two. And if you look at the system as a total, pretty much anything that you can put in the vicinity of current headquarters or headquarters itself is a reasonable place to put a headquarters fire station in Westwood. And there's lots of other considerations, which I know Chip and Jason and crew are going to talk about. These are the total number of runs that were done. A one and two and three are your ambulances. C three is car three. That's the captain. Engines one, two, three, or engines one, two, five, ladder one and two. Those are the big pieces of fire apparatus. And if you look, you can see that the total system does about eleven point six calls per day, runs per day, pardon me, across the, across the five year data sample. Just the distinction between in words, runs is the number of times a vehicle moves. So you could have a call that would have three runs. You could have a call that would have nine runs. So these are the number of the time, number of times per day on average that the units move. This is interesting because from a, in a dense suburban or urban environment, and you're in both of those categories, depending where you are in town, you don't need to add an engine company until you get close to nine, maybe ten runs per day per unit. And that comes from what's the likelihood that we're going to have a concurrent call where I go to call for that engine, that engine isn't sitting there. I got to call for that ambulance and the ambulance isn't sitting there. It's at the hospital, it's on the road, it's at another call. Let me drop down to the next slide, please. So we were asked to evaluate a handful of questions with respect to operations. We talked about the station location piece. Part of this is, and this is always an issue when we're dealing with architects as part of our work is what should we be thinking about on new stations that are nonarchitectural but are operational? That are, and some of the operational things, the architects think about regardless of the operational model you're using. What's the appropriate deployment model for the community? How should we be overseeing our operations in terms of make sure we have appropriate span of control? Making sure that somebody's there to run the, run the town when the chief and other members of command staff are not there. And then there was a big and interesting question for us, which is, should the department continue providing EMS transport? Now, a key note about EMS transport is you can send engine companies to EMS calls all day long and not get compensated for it. You only get compensated for providing EMS if you actually provide the transport of the patient to the hospital. There are some communities that are charging for nontransport. But it's a soft billing exercise typically aimed at well, we sent an EMS transport unit and you didn't use it, but we we treated you in some way at your house or at your business or at school or wherever. We're not going to get to bill you for providing the BLS service that we did. So we're going to send you a bill for two hundred bucks and see if you'll pay. But the law basically requires you to get paid to do the transport. First, you can drop down, please. Thank you. So common suburban model where you're providing fire-based EMS transport is to pair up an engine company. In your case, you also have the Quint. A Quint being an engine that also has the characteristics of a ladder or a truck company. Have an engine or a Quint at every station. Get a staff medic unit at every single station. Those units should be staffed. Shift man should be separate from the company officers that are responsible for overseeing the daily operations of the three people on the engine or Quint and the two people on the ambulance. It's a pretty common suburban staffing model of three plus two. You'll hear the idea of staffing with four people in an engine or a ladder, something like that. That standard really was focused on the metro. That standard really was focused on the metro departments. You don't, you don't typically find that level of staffing in suburban departments in the Commonwealth. Nor in most other suburban communities. And it's important to note that currently. Your workload. Justifies having. Two engines and the Quint counts as an engine. And two ambulances. Lots of suburban communities use the Quint idea. You know, we, we don't have a lot of fires. We don't have a lot of super tall buildings. We know that our neighbors are coming anyway. We go to them when they have a structured fire. We know they're coming to us when we have a structured fire. That's just a, it's a good practice to be in. Next slide, please. So the daily operations oversight question. You should have a shift commander to make sure that things are. Staying consistent across shifts, that the the way that the chief wants things run. On a daily basis is happening. That the way Station One. Does things at eight o'clock in the morning when they're doing equipment checks is the same way things are happening at Station Two. We've made the recommendation that you add for an additional lieutenant so that. Both companies, the fire companies, have a lieutenant. Plus two firefighters. Get that additional level of supervision because they operate independently. The captain shouldn't have to toggle back and forth between. Today, I'm on a company. Tomorrow, I'm the shift commander. Or this morning, I'm on a company and this afternoon, I'm the shift commander, depending on how staffing is working. And that will be increasingly important. Particularly as you. Modernize headquarters and are able to deploy personnel as we've recommended with a. A piece of fire apparatus and an ambulance at both stations. Next slide, please. Last slide, please. That's the last one. So you're deploying an EMS system out of the fire department ALS based. Your revenues are roughly one point six million dollars a year. Those revenues are used. To pay for the cost of the firefighters that staff the ambulances. Replace ambulances, partial replacement costs for the ambulances. Pay for. Equipment and disposables and things like that. It's roughly. It's coincident that if you were to. Give up EMS. You could, you'd lose that one point six million dollars. You could then, or you spend one point six million dollars and staff a third piece of fire apparatus, but not have EMS service delivery. From, from my experience. Number one, you don't need a third piece of fire apparatus staff. And number two. The service delivery and and the level of service that you're able to provide. Out of a firebase EMS system in a community like Westwood. Is is the appropriate way to deliver service. And I would maintain a firebase EMS system. Going forward. As a best practice. One of the nice. You know, oftentimes we'll we'll get retained because people will say, well. We don't have firebase EMS. We want to do EMS because we can make money. And for those of you on the board and in the public and. Who are watching, you know, businesses that make money are actually generating more money than the cost to run the business. Public sector based, you know, firebase EMS service delivery systems don't make money. In the same way. They help cover the cost. And one of the things they do that is not often talked about. But it's actually a super cool side benefit of firebase EMS. Is that they help make the cost of adding additional firefighters who are there for. The relatively infrequent. Structure fire or other major event. They make those firefighters a whole lot less expensive for the community to have. And you're getting great utilization out of those people providing a necessary and important service. That underscores our recommendation that you maintain a firebase EMS system. Thank you. Chip, that's my last one, if you want to. So she can. Drop mine. Thank you very much for running that for me.
Hey. Do you like us to go right into our presentation?
Sorry, I was on mute. Yes, and welcome. And actually, if I may, just before you do, I neglected to say earlier. That the town had contracted with Travis Miller and Criterion Associates. To conduct the operational study. And that that had been done along with the feasibility study by the approval. Of the use of university station mitigation funds. So the cost of the study and contract. For the operational study was fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. And then as to the work that Doran Whittier has done, the cost of that study and contract was seventy-two thousand dollars. So with that, welcome Donald and the rest of your team from Doran Whittier. Thank you for being here.
Terrific. Thank you very much, and we really appreciate coming back. To Westwood tonight. In the interest of time, I'm just going to introduce our team, and I believe Jason is going to be sharing our screen. So. I'm Don Walter, our principal with Doran Whittier, and with me tonight, Chip Highcamp, who is our project manager. Overseeing the day-to-day operations, Cassie Plunkett, who's our project architect. Who's going through all the design and documentation. Of what we do, and then Jason is our public safety specialist who's been working on the programming and preliminary design. So we're gonna, we're gonna tag team you here a little bit tonight, but we'll again try to be brief in the interest of time. This is an update. We did see you a few months ago, so we want to give you a sense of where we are today and where we're going after today. So Jason, if you can share that.
All right. Is everyone able to see that?
Not quite yet.
Not quite yet. Okay.
There it goes.
Okay, so, yeah, we were contracted a number of months ago to conduct a feasibility study. Which considered a number, took into consideration a number of components, as you can see here. By our checklist, we did existing facility. And site assessments, we did programming space needs, which continues to evolve, I should say, you know, it's it's a live document. That will evolve right through till a a final building. Program is selected and design moves forward. We talked about Travis's operational assessment. I mentioned the site assessments, and we've done some initial design options that we're going to. Share with you this evening. And as I said, just a couple of seconds ago here, we continue to refine the program as we move forward. After tonight, we're going to continue to move forward with those. Options refinement, and we're going to bring up some three D massing in what we expect might be. A preferred location with some cost estimates, so you can compare. Additional renovation to new, for instance, and then we'll have a final report for consideration when we're all said and done. So why don't we go through some of our process and. Well, questions at the end?
Great. So I'll jump into the the programming effort, and I'll zoom in on this in a minute, but. What you're seeing here is a compilation of the entire programming effort, at least a snapshot to this point. We've gone through a lot of development with this. What we basically did is we started with a. Online questionnaire that went out to a number of staff members. I believe over thirty people responded or. See, over twenty, twenty-three people responded with great information about how the facilities currently work. And what they would expect to see in a modern facility going forward. Basically, what you're seeing here, and I know you're not able to read the text yet, but we'll zoom in shortly. The different colors here represent different areas of the building. Yellow being visitor areas, blue being administrative spaces. Green being staff support and living and training spaces. This pink red area are operational spaces. The yellow slash orange here being infrastructure. Sorry about that. Right, I'm gonna, oh, and the final thing on this slide that I wanted to point out is. We've got. A column here that shows hazard zones for each space. What this is, is that with current NFPA standards, this is relatively new. We need to designate every space within the building to a hazard standard, whether it's. A safe or green zone, a yellow transitional zone, or a red, which would be a higher hazard zone. Being a space that would potentially have contaminants. That could affect staff or the public, should those contaminants make their way through. So the building is zoned in order to appropriately handle those contaminants. So we're going to go to the next slide. We're going to zoom in a little bit, and you can start seeing. A little bit better the breakdown of some of these building areas, again, visitor areas, administration. Staff support, living and training areas, operational areas. And you can start to see the way this is broken down. The first column being existing area, so we're identifying what spaces are currently existing within the headquarters building. We have a comparative column for the last study that was done, which was in two thousand fourteen. We have an area standard column, and that basically is the industry standard or code required size for each space. We then have the number of spaces that we need going forward. The total area of that space and then a priority. We we basically break down how important is. Those spaces going forward in case we need to shuffle any spaces around. And that works the same for all of these. Here's a little bit more of the operational spaces. Some of the infrastructure spaces, and then what we have down here in gray is called a grossing factor. That grossing factor is basically additional square footage. In this case, it's about thirty percent. That accounts for things like mechanical shafts, hallways, and the thickness of walls that we can't accommodate for. You know, two, two D line drawing early on, so. That additional square footage is put in to make sure that we have an accurate total going forward. Zoom in a little bit more. And you can start seeing the totals for each of those individual areas for headquarters. So the total for visitor areas. Being two thousand square feet approximately. And that really incorporates new, a new training room, meeting room and support spaces, lobby space, things of that nature. You can see right now, we've only got about seven hundred and fifty square feet. It's a bit undersized for all of that. There's also future growth included in all of these. We factored in a little over five percent or almost two thousand square feet for the entire building to accommodate future growth. For the administrative areas, we're looking just over thirty-two hundred square feet. Staff support, living and training, about fifty-three hundred square feet. Operations, and this really includes the apparatus bays and all of the required spaces around the apparatus bays. For decontamination, storage of supplies, all of the critical things that really make the building function. That's almost thirteen and a half thousand square feet. And then infrastructure, so mechanical spaces, electrical, plumbing, stairs, those type of things. Get a subtotal of about twenty-eight thousand square feet. Add in that grossing factor that I mentioned, and we're at about thirty-six thousand square feet. And again, right now, this is a snapshot in time. We've gone through a number of meetings to get to this point. One of the things that you did not see in any of these line items are all of the numbers and spaces that we took out. So this number, this thirty-six thousand four twenty-two is a reduced total. So we were closer to forty thousand earlier on. We went through and really optimized the building, combined spaces for efficiency and really brought that total down as tight as possible. To make the project more affordable. And still function with that future growth included going forward.
And if I could just jump in real quick, Jason.
Please.
The these, these numbers are really based upon. Current and expected fire practices in. Communities of this size. So the square footage you see here are in direct relation to the the space need program, and there's no overask here. These, these are absolutely needed spaces within the facility, because when you look at, Jesus. We're basically doubling the size of what we have there now. It's it's because you're drastically undersized.
Yeah, that's right. And some of that's for code reasons. Some of that is staffing reasons. Operational reasons, variety of different things. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Right. One of the important things I mentioned before is hot zones. These are some diagrams. Examples that we would develop on all of our projects at this point, really trying to figure out how to appropriately zone the building. You can see red spaces, in this case being the apparatus bays and some adjacent support spaces. Being separated by yellow spaces which make transitions. Before you would get to any public or staffing zones or living areas. We really work at setting these buildings up so that they're as safe as possible, separate mechanical zones as well, so that. All of the the air is as clean as possible. It's really critical doing this for the health and well-being of the staff and the public. And this is something that the current facility does not meet, and as as most facilities in New England. That are of this age do not, but this is going forward. The way a modern fire station would be expected to perform and to meet all of the current NFPA codes. That have been recently updated. One of the other things that we always do is we incorporate training opportunities wherever possible within the building. These are some examples from other projects. For this particular project, we're looking at certainly doing ladder training. Hose training, confined space training, and another, a number of other opportunities within the building. That are low cost, but very important, critical training opportunities for the department to continue to learn on the job.
And the other thing that you you see pictured here are training spaces and meeting spaces. So we also allow opportunity for the departments to host their own trainings, invite other departments to host trainings. These spaces and similar spaces can also be used for emergency operations. Or redundant emergency operations if one's already had, you could have a backup situation. For your emergency operations. And then the other thing is you can also have it as community meeting space, so it's. It also has that overlap with the community as well outside of the fire operation. So. It's a lot that we can do with these buildings. Then obviously, the, you know, the fitness center, you know, for the, again, what Jason's been talking about, which is the health and safety of the. Of the staff. Of the department, so stuff that we look at when we're looking at these buildings and when we're doing the programming with with the department.
Was that training room from the Dedham Fire Department?
On the, all the way to the, to the right, yes. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
You did a nice job on that.
Yeah, no, it's just wrapping up. It does look a very nice job.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. So the sites, and this is basically, this is born from the response operations. Report that Travis worked on and discussed previously. So all of, all the sites that we looked at, the focus of these sites was kind of in in the heart of. You know, this part of High Street where, you know, we got the most yellow and the least amount of green dispersed throughout the, throughout the town. And then town-owned sites as well. So. The the sites that we looked at and kind of the order that we looked at them in, obviously. The existing site doing an ad renovation to the existing building on the existing site. There's a town-owned parcel of land. That is currently behind the Starbucks. It's a landlocked site. And so, you know, one of the challenges there was getting access to High Street. Then we looked at Town Hall, the Town Hall site as well. We know from previous experience in town that. There has been discussion or desire, if you will, to have a public safety campus. So we did look at that. We were able to, you know, basically, we understand there's additional challenges that the town would have if that was, if that was the desire. The main one being, you know, what do we do at Town Hall? But in any case, as part of the study, we did, we did a look at that. And then the third option would be a new structure, looking at the existing, existing site with a new structure. So. Those are kind of the four, the four options that we kind of are, are, are preparing for the report, for the final report. So the first one that we, the ad renovation option, you know, so we just list some pros and cons on the side here. The biggest one here, and you know, kind of the most obvious one is with a building of this age, just getting everything updated. The the cost associated with that is, is, is pretty, is a pretty big step. And, you know, there's also the challenges of, you still need to relocate the. Um and you know, there's also the challenges of, you still need to relocate the staff during the the build. Um and it just, there's a lot of challenges phasing. Um and it's not a, it's an expensive option. Um so it's also one that um that we, that we, we look at, but um I think it's, it's, it's known that it's, it's probably not the most desired um option that we have. So the next one. So the next one, this is again, that landlocked site behind the Starbucks. Um again, the challenge being um the main challenge there being access to High Street and the property at seven twenty-two High Street, I believe is the current golf station. Get the sense from the town that that land will not become available. Um so um again, this is probably not um, probably not one of our, one of the options that we'll um be pursuing. Um but again, goods, it was a good, good study and it would have been, it would have been a good option. Um but um doesn't look like that one. Um it will pan out as, it pan out either. Uh again, so this is a Town Hall, the Town Hall site, the Public Safety Campus option. Um you know, we looked at this two different ways. One is a standalone structure that would operate next to the current police uh headquarters. And the other one would be to connect them and have a shared kind of lobby space. Um kind of a a a community, community entrance, entrance space, which would kind of, kind of guide you into each facility um independently. So um and again, on all of these options, just I should have mentioned this earlier. Um we have proven that the, the program that Jason just went over, it does work on all of these sites. Um whether they're good ideas or bad ideas, uh you know, we can, or sites, if you will. Um we did for, we did sh- show that we can get the desired program um onto those sites. So um let me go to the next one, Jason. Thanks. Um and then the last, uh the last one, um you know, that is the existing site. Um which again, we can, you know, satisfy the, we can satisfy the program. Um we do have, like I mentioned earlier, this would be a full, a full removal of the building. Um so we would have temporary, we would need to make temporary operations. Um you know, so we have, you know, we would work, could coordinate that with the chief. Um and that would be part of kind of the, the cost estimating that we do for this, for this scheme or with any scheme. Um kind of all of those items are factored into that pricing exercise. So um in addition to, you know, the building and the, and um at this location, would also include the, to uh the costs to temporary ha- uh operate uh the operate, the department um off of this site on a temporary basis.
Great. Thanks, Chip. Thanks, Jason. Um so that gives you a sense of of where we've been and what some of our most recent uh work is uh has taken us to. Uh as you can see, we're gonna start and develop some imagery, some cost estimates and submit that final report. We share some of these, these diagrams here, uh top one being Norfolk Fire, which is now under construction. Uh so just to give you an idea of what, what a station could look like. Uh Islington Station is in the middle, then down the bottom is something a little more contemporary up in uh in Stonem that we've been working on. So um uh we'll be having those discussions also about uh not only what might this fire station be sized like or might it be located, but what's it gonna look like? So that'll be uh part of what's next. So uh at that, I will uh stop, say thank you. And uh we, we and Travis will welcome uh any questions or comments you may have.
Well, thank you very much uh to all of you. Uh I should have stated at the outset uh that we have partnered uh with Doran Whittier uh for a a long time in Westwood uh and s- with Fire Station uh in Islington uh and currently uh with the New Klein Hill School. Uh so we have valued uh that relationship with Dor and Whittier. Um and you've done tremendous work uh throughout the state.
Thank you.
I uh and actually, if I could just ask one quick question as to the building we are contemplating building. Uh what would be the useful life of that building estimated?
So, so we construct our buildings to have a fifty-year useful life, just like the schools that we design. That doesn't mean that all of, all of the moving parts inside the building are gonna last fifty years. But certainly, certainly the building will be, will be designed for that. Um so that's, that's, that's part of any of our uh construction.
Okay. Well, I think uh I I propose that we start our discussion with the operational piece uh and then move to the feasibility. Does that uh sound good to my colleagues?
Uh yep, I think that works well.
Okay. Uh I I have a few questions uh to start, um if I may, and and then I'll open it up to the both of you. Um so Travis, um i- if we, and I I think it was slide forty-six uh where you had uh the data up as far as calls uh between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty-two. Um a- a- and uh you had the number of calls uh and runs uh for the ambulances, for the engines, et cetera. Uh I'm wondering, how is our data trending?
You're heading up. Um and certainly the prior discussion you were having about Mumford, et cetera. Um that trend will continue up. Um the I mean, typically you can look at fire rescue service delivery. It used to be that you could say um take the population of a community and multiply it times ten percent and that's roughly what you should expect in terms of calls for service. Multiply that times a hundred and fifty percent and that'll give you your runs. Um that isn't, that's, that's changed um both because I I think frankly, people's awareness of nine-one-one has dramatically changed. Um people call nine-one-one probably more often than um the police chief or the fire chief wish they would, um and for things that they probably wish they wouldn't call them for at times. Um but yeah, you're, you're, you're year over year, you're trending upwards. Um and that makes a fair amount of sense, given the highway infrastructure that you have, given the development pattern that you've got in the community. Um you're no longer a community of um primarily single-family homes. You've, you've got a wide mix of uses that are now being um developed and have been developed in town. And um calls for service are responding as you'd expect they would. They will continue to go up. It, it, it'll probably be some time before you would get to the point where you're like, oh, wow, we really need a front engine company on a routine basis.
We needed what? I'm sorry?
Before you'd need a third piece of fire apparatus. So before you'd need a third ambulance. Now, are there days when, are there hours when you wish you had seven ambulances? Sure. Once a year, a couple of times a year maybe. Are there times of year when you wish you had four? Absolutely. But by, by the, the, the very nature of the Commonwealth and the very nature of the focus on um local governance and home rule and relatively small communities compared to much of the rest of the United States, you have an increased reliance on mutual aid um that you don't see in other parts of the country where the systems tend to be significantly bigger. Um my kids live in Andover, Mass. It's a three-station system. I live these days in Baltimore County. We have sixty stations. You don't hear Baltimore County calling for mutual aid very often. Um because they just, they have the resources in-house to do that. You hear Andover or Westwood or Needham uh or Bellingham um where I was a little bit ago. You use mutual aid as a fairly routine way of delivering service. And part of that is because if you look at it mathematically, from the way like an ambulance company would look at it, if it's a private sector business. And they said, well, how many ambulances do I need per hour or on this four-hour block or whatever? You find yourself in these weird fractional situations where, wow, I really wish I had two-point-three ambulances.
Uh can I ask you, are you, are you able to quantify on a percentage basis what our um increased demand has been year over year?
Yeah, we can. And the other thing we can do is um I can get you numbers on another important issue, which is, or another important consideration, which is concurrent call activity. In other words, when do I have one hop, even if it's by thirty seconds, when do I have one call that's laying on top of another one? So by that, that's happening. A unit I might have used for that call is already committed to something else. The other issue is what I call the refill rate, which is, I go to it and it's mostly an EMS issue. Go to an EMS call, evaluate, find the patient, evaluate the patient, package the patient, transport the patient, get into the hospital, hope that you don't wait too long at the hospital before they can get a bed because you're still responsible for their care until you can hand them over. Then you gotta clean the unit and get back to town. And if that refill rate gets extended for whatever reason, that can impact your concurrent calls and that can impact your unit availability. But again, your, your, your workload right now, you, you're appropriately, you would be appropriately staffed if you had consistently shift command two pieces of fire apparatus and two staffed ambulances and weren't jump staffing between multiple pieces to do that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
You, um since you're asking questions about some of the underlying data, Travis, I, you know, a- and trends. I've got a question. There's obviously two significant um, you know, pre-post um events that would obviously create noise in this data, right? You've got the global pandemic. And then you also have the sort of concurrent with that, the closure of Norwood, Norwood Hospital due to the flood. And I I'd be interested in understanding how that data breaks out and how it has affected your refill rate to your prior point. Um and whether or not we expect that to return to pre-pandemic levels once the new hospital is open. Because I think those are the types of things that are going to influence um both staffing and some of the future space needs that Doran Whittier is planning in their facilities.
Yeah, it's a great, those, those are really interesting questions. Um I, I will say that in the twenty-five or thirty communities that I've worked with across the, sort of across that barrier of the pandemic, that, that stamp in the the, there was this, there was a, a logical or at least seemingly logical expectation that the pandemic was gonna drastically change what was going on. Um in most communities that I've worked with, the most significant impact of the pandemic has been communities scrambling to look for ways to distribute their, their staff. So they didn't have everybody sleeping on top of each other so that if somebody got sick, they didn't lose the whole shift in terms of like having to, you know, quarantine them for some period of time. Way more significant um over that period of time, again, across a couple dozen plus communities has been community opens an urgent care facility and um that urgent care facility, all of a sudden, people are coming in. People are like, wait, why are we going to this address like five times a day? There's no nursing home there. And you're going because of risk, because urgent care facility is a risk averse. And if somebody comes in and coughs during the pandemic, they're calling nine-one-one to get them transported because they don't want to deal with them in the urgent care facility. The second thing is, in your case, the closure of Norwood Hospital, what that's meant in terms of changing where you're transporting both low and high acuity patients has been way more significant in terms of its impact than the pandemic was in terms of um your service delivery capability. We didn't see, we didn't see during the pandemic a huge spike in workload because what happened was in most communities, you had a, you had a spike in certain kinds of calls. Respiratory distress calls went way up. But we may all remember fondly what traffic was like during the height of the pandemic, if we actually had reason to go out someplace. The, the, the car accident calls were way down because there was nobody on the road. And so the, the workload did a whack-a-mole thing where it, it, you went up in certain kinds of calls, but the sort of daily, you know, fender bender, send an engine and a medic because you had a, a two-car MVC at an intersection. Those calls largely disappeared for many communities, not just you, but for many, many communities across the country. The workload just shifted to a different kind of work. Um shifted away from rescue and car accident and it shifted towards um even more medical calls, which make up the vast majority of your work and most communities' work anyway.
So you, um so you've recommended uh that we have eleven personnel on duty per shift. Um and you indicated that uh you don't think that we need to add a unit, be it an ambulance or an engine um until um we get to nine to ten runs per day for that particular unit. Um so I'm wondering, you know, obviously in Westwood, we want to make sure that we are complying uh with national standards, that we are providing the highest level of public safety um that is appropriate for a community like ours. So I'm wondering uh what standards, uh if any, exist with respect to that. Um and also uh what comparable communities in Massachusetts are doing in that regard.
That's a, that's a great question. So I, and lots of questions within that question. So if I, if I miss one and you remember one that you asked me or a sub-question that you asked me and I don't get to it, um please talk to me and I'll, 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 I'll come back to that one. So in terms of national standards, you will hear people talking about um the NFPA, which is um can be neatly located in Quincy for you. Um there are a couple different flavors of standards that come from the NFPA. You have things like NFPA one, which some states or some communities will adopt as their building and fire code. Um if they, if, if, if that community or state adopts that as their code, then that becomes in a, in essence, law. Uh because you've made that decision as a, as a legislative body of one kind or another um to, to adopt that. You have NFPA fifteen hundred and a couple other standards that um Jason mentioned and that the manufacturers of the equipment, um whether it be the gloves or the boots or the trucks or the helicopters or the ambulances or what the, how they paint the ambulances or the trucks or the helicopters or what color the gloves are, et cetera. The manufacturers um out of an overabundance of risk averse caution are essentially adopting saying, even though there's no legislative mandate that we respond to NFPA fifteen hundred as an example. Um we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna manufacture our air bottles or our gloves or our boots or our trucks according to these NFPA standards because if we don't and somebody gets hurt, we don't want to have to spend the money and spend the time and have the fight to explain why we did. Even if it's not mandated legislatively. Around the staffing um and deployment question, there's been an effort over the past twenty years, and this is really a forty-ish year effort um of fire rescue trying to, in essence, catch up to law enforcement because there were grants that came out in the sixties, post all kinds of reasons that they came out in the sixties. Um law enforcement started getting federal and state grants to do research. It became very data-focused. Fire rescue for a variety of public policy reasons was relatively behind that. Um in the late nineteen nineties, um the result of which happened in two thousand and one, you had a committee that sat down to say, okay, let's have a conversation about response times and standards. The vast majority of fire departments in this country, and in fact, the majority of fire departments in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts are volunteer or paid on call. Um the committee that sat down was really looking at from the, a metro fire rescue perspective, meaning the top fifty to a hundred biggest communities or jurisdictions in the country. Let's develop a document that we can use to help us do strategic planning, master planning, budgeting, et cetera. Um how many people should be on an engine? How many people should be on a truck company? How many people should I be able to put at a structured fire? And the volunteer departments quickly raised their hands and said, whoa, 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 wait about uh, what about us? So the one that looks at those, at the career departments is NFPA seventeen-ten. You have NFPA seventeen-twenty, which essentially references a bunch of other NFPA documents and really doesn't say anything other than, by the time you assemble a force of people at, at a residential structure, go back and look at NFPA fourteen with a N fourteen-ten and you should be able to get water on fire within two minutes. Go back and look at NFPA fourteen with a, and fourteen ten, and you should be able to get water on fire within two minutes after you assemble an effective response force. NFPA seventeen ten. Which was originally focused on metro fire departments is the one we'll here talked about with. Four people in an engine, four people in a truck. We should have seventeen people there within eight minutes of drive time. You get some time for getting dressed, you get some time for dispatch processing. They played around with those first two and the definitions frankly. Around dispatching and, um, reaction time are. Intentionally. Fluid or fuzzy. Uh, because different jurisdictions define those things a little bit differently. And. The drive time is easy because it's drive time. It's easy to measure. Everybody agrees that once you start driving and you arrive someplace. You know, that's easy time to calculate. The four minutes and eight minutes that they refer to in the standards. They're suspiciously similar between EMS and fire. The fire one is a lot, frankly, it's a lot of research that comes out of WPI and, and the, the Fire Research Institute at WPI. Looking at. Typical, uh, room and contents fires. Um, if you, if you add the drive time and the dispatch time. You can get a first unit on scene within six minutes from the time that the fire starts. You can typically keep the fire in the room of origin. If it gets out to ten minutes, which again is that two minutes plus eight minutes of drive time. If you have a bunch of people there. You may have. The research suggests that you'll probably lose the structure or most of the structure or the catastrophic loss of the structure. On the EMS side. The four minutes and eight minutes. Comes out of work done, or at least sort of promulgated by the American Heart Association. Um, because when you look at EMS, it starts to get really complicated. In terms of, well, if I'd gotten there thirty seconds earlier and you've got a broken wrist, would my arriving thirty seconds earlier have changed the outcome?
I, I think, um, you know, I might be able to narrow my question maybe a little more, which is, you know, I'm wondering if. Y- your recommendation that with. The, the rate of runs, uh, that we have currently per unit. Although I, I'm, I'm not sure what they are in this year and, and you're going to get us. Uh, I think those. Numbers, um, showing what. The increase, uh, year over year has been so we can understand that, that trend better. But I'm wondering, um, you know, your point that we don't need to add a unit. Again, whether it be an ambulance or an engine until we get to. Nine to ten runs per day for that unit. What, what is the basis for that statement in that recommendation?
So, so that. Can I interrupt for a minute? May I interrupt for a minute?
Sure, Joe.
I think I can answer your question. Because what you asked is where are we going? And I was a bit disappointed that I didn't see any trend data in this. So I went and took a look at the report from two thousand thirteen from emergency services couns- counseling. And T- uh, Tish, if you want. Me to share the screen, fine, but you don't have to. But they have a perfect trend graph that goes from two thousand fourteen to two thousand thirty-four. And this is pretty interesting because in two thousand. Twenty, they forecast one thousand seven hundred and sixty ambulance EMS calls. And when I went to the two thousand twenty-one town report. They had one thousand seven hundred and sixty-one recorded. That's the kind of trend data I think you were asking for, and that's what I'd like to see. I don't, I don't need to hear the NFPA regulations. I want to see the trend data. Anytime I've added staff or equipment. I had to see the trend data and I was. We have it right in front of us from two thousand thirteen. I think this guy was right on the mark.
A- a- and to thank you for that, Joe, and I, I think, you know, I want to understand the, the basis for the recommendation. That y- you don't need to add a unit until you get to nine to ten runs per day per unit. Now, I'm wondering what the basis for that recommendation is. Where, where does that? Come from a- and, and if you could explain for us, what is the basis for? The recommendation of the eleven personnel per shift given. Where we, uh, I'm asking you quite a bunch of questions and one again, but given where we are. Uh, and where we're heading and our reliance on mutual aid. So I guess the first question is, what's the basis for the recommendation on? Not until we get to nine to ten runs per day per unit.
So, so the nine to ten is a proxy. For concurrent call activity. So what you'll find is that in communities where. You start getting above that number. And it's not an every hour and it's not every single day of the week. But if you start getting into that in an average, you're averaging. Eight, nine, ten calls a day for a particular unit in a particular station. You'll find. That all of a sudden you're tripping on yourself. More and more often in terms of concurrent call activity. You go to, you, you basically go to the drawer to grab that ambulance and like, oh, there's no ambulance left in the drawer. Or you go to grab the, the engine company and there's, there's no engine sitting there and you gotta go to the next station or the third station away. Or you're going to mutual aid.
You're saying that's a, a standard practice that once it gets to nine to ten runs per day per unit, that that's when. An additional unit needs to be added.
It is, and you'll, you'll find. There are agencies out there that, that, that really take that to the extreme. And I, I'm not suggesting that Westwood should do that at all. I mean, I, I think that if you get to the point where you're running at seven or eight calls for a, for a unit out of a particular station. You probably need to start having yourselves a conversation about. What are we going to do in terms of, is it peak load staffing? Would you put a unit? For twelve hours a day of that type, uh, that's typically the ambulance that, that you can hit with first. But it's just sort of a big order of magnitude and you're, you're a long way away from that. I mean, you're, you're averaging eleven runs a day across the entire system. During the, during this period of data collection between seventeen and twenty-two. And so. You know, to say that you're, you're, you're close, you're not, you're not particularly close. I mean, you're averaging. Five ambulance runs a day. Across two ambulances essentially.
Let me, if I could ask you one follow-up question on that and then I, I will. Turn over the baton to my, my colleagues who I'm sure have questions as well. So regarding our current. Status of, of calls per day, how do we compare? To comparable communities, um, in our area and, um, a- as to how they're staffed?
You're, um. It's fascinating because I actually spent some time in, in. Four different communities in the last couple of weeks. They're not that far from you. And you'll find that, and this is why the comparative survey stuff is really. I'm really reticent to use it and to rely upon it in terms of making decisions because. Just because your neighbor is doing it doesn't. Doesn't make it right and it doesn't mean that they've made a more effective set of decisions or a more effective set of policy choices than, than you have. Let me answer the question in two ways. From a staffing perspective. Three-person staffing with an officer and two firefighters. On an engine or a truck or aerial company. Is pretty common in most of the. Suburban to moderately urban communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Sort of adjacent to four ninety-five and in. Now Boston is going to be different. For Klein, Cambridge is a little bit different because. Because they want to be Boston. Basically, and they've got that level of bourbon, right? They've got the, they've got the high. Like lots of high buildings, residential buildings. Density, et cetera. But Somerville was staffing with three plus, well, with three people on its fire apparatus typically. It's one of the densest communities in the United States. In terms of workload. You don't find a lot of crazy variance in workload per capita. Anywhere in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The only exceptions to that are. Communities out in the western part of the state that have I ninety and have. You can point to like literally the weird corner that's in, that's on the pike. That generates like a weirdly disproportionate amount of workload in the community that may have a thousand people living in it or something like that.
I, I have other questions, but I want to give my colleagues a chance. Uh, Rob, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, I basically would like to build on Joe's question. Um, you know. Travis, is there an opportunity for us to get a look at the underlying data, right? So if you're talking about. Eleven being the appropriate staffing amount. I'm really curious as to what that call volume growth trend has looked like. And then specific to, you know, the. Y- your metric of, or the, the metric of unit hour utilization. I have to imagine that the increase in drive time, you know, has got to spawn higher recall rates. And so, you know, part of what I'm curious about is. First of all, is the eleven the appropriate number based on the data? And i- it may be based on your recommendation, but I'd like to see that. In, you know, graphically, um, based on data and then, you know, what has been the impact of? The Norwood Hospital closure and how that has impacted recall rates. You know, when we have some of that concurrent activity that you're talking about due to your refill. I mean, to me. You know, so I want to see the data.
And, and that the recall rates is an interesting question. I, I, I mean, we've seen a drastic. Change in responsiveness to recall. Across the Commonwealth. There are a number of communities in the Commonwealth. And this is less so the case for Westwood, but just as a general statement. There are many communities that relied. Quite heavily on. responsiveness to recalls. And ironically, as the technology has made. Recall even easier. Uh, we've actually seen responsiveness to recall drop off and that's for, I mean. There's societal reasons for that, two income families. There's societal reasons for that where communities have changed the residency requirements or the distance from town requirements. And frankly, there's some exhaustion. Um, I, you know, I, I suspect that. People are essentially voting with their, their feet or their phone answering. With respect to a recall. When. You know, they're already working overtime or they. They, 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 they're seeing recall exhaustion and that's not just directed at Westwood. That's a. That's an endemic issue across the Commonwealth.
I, I, if I could add to that, uh, uh, you know. In addition to the data that we've all now. Expressed interest in, in seeing and I specifically identified. The trend as far as the, the increase in demand, you know, what we need to know is we're, we're building a, 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 a new fire station for fifty years. Um, and Doran Willier has said, we're building in, you know, a five percent. Reserve so that there can be growth. We need to know, is that enough? What, what can we expect, uh, for growth in the next fifty years? Now, that's a long time. We understand that. But we've got to do the best we can to understand. What that, um, staff increase may be, um, based on the data that we have.
Yeah, and Jason, Jason could talk to that a little bit. We. The guy worked with Doran Willier a lot. We, we have a lot of. Iterative and back and forth conversations with respect to that exact question. And making sure that. The facility can accommodate, whether it's an additional unit, but more importantly, can the facility accommodate additional people? And have we taken that into account? And, and Jason could talk to that or Trip could talk to that.
Yeah, uh, that's right, Travis. We, I mean, that's part of the reason that we did factor in that additional square footage. You, you know, in terms of growth. We can certainly accommodate growth. And yeah, we're still finalizing the numbers, but right now we can accommodate fourteen to fifteen. Across, um, the system. Um, going forward with this new proposed facility and that, that can be adjusted depending on what those needs are. As we go forward, but that, it's a good amount of growth factored in.
That's fourteen to fifteen firefighters per shift?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that. Oh, I think Donald had a.
Yeah, ju- just. It's such a fine line too, right? Because you don't want to overbuild.
Right.
And, and you're criticized for making a facility too big. So we also look at where. Potential growth can happen either around the building or on top of the building in the future. So that's, that's part of the strategies that we'd be looking at moving forward also.
Right. Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, I obviously painted this room the wrong color. I'll take my hand down, but.
Sorry, it wasn't visible.
Somebody very creepy at your window. You better, you better go outside and see what's going on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, 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 just a couple of comments. One is I, I'm. Inclined to believe eleven is the appropriate number. But we, as Rob said, we do need additional data. But I want to talk about the elephant in the room and, and. I, I mean this sincerely is. Westwood has always given more mutual aid than it's received. And that's an issue that has to be addressed. I don't, Mary Ann, I don't want to pull a. Kevin Costner in the Field of Dreams. If you remember, if you build it, they will come. I don't want to staff it so they can call. Have to address this. And I, I appreciate some professional input on how we're going to address that. Because we have one town that's a volunteer ambulance company and we're providing them service and. It's, 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 w- we've been taking on the chin, the staff's been taking on the chin for years and we have to address this. I'm not, I'm not sure how. I was hoping there'd be something in the report. Thank you. Joe, uh, just to build on that, is that something that if we had the data set, we would be able to identify? So that's, that's one question that I've got, based on what you just said. The other is, you know, we've just had a conversation that is common. Across the state in terms of MBTA, uh, building requirements. And did the, the projected growth in any way? Factor in some of the potential trends related to that type of building?
I agree, Rob. We, but we would, would just. I want to be a good neighbor. I, I don't want to be taken advantage of.
Is that some data, uh, Travis, that you can also provide to us?
It is. It's, I'm sitting here, I. My mom graduated from Natick High School and I'm like, okay, right. Thinking about like towns we used to drive through and Matt thought about it. The community, the unnamed community that you're mentioning is. Surrounded by net donors of, of service, I imagine. You're not alone. But.
We're not, but they, they rely on.
But I do understand the frustration. Yeah, you're, you're, you're surrounded. They are rather surrounded by. By net donor communities with maybe one exception.
Well, is there any kind of incentive that you've seen used elsewhere to help communities that are great donors?
Yeah, so, um, I mean, Amherst is kind of an extreme example, right? If you think about Amherst and the communities around them. What Amherst has done is said. We'll establish with you and it called the town. City manager on that, they're like the city of the town of, they're another, like a weird name, community Amherst these days, which shouldn't be that surprising. They essentially said, we will give you mutual aid for free. At the level that we receive mutual aid from you. Anything beyond that, we have, we are having a contractual conversation with you. And in essence, what Amherst is doing is for the. They call them the hill town. So you'd like tell them in a couple of other communities that are. Up towards two O two and the reservoir and then I think one north and one south of, of, of the city of Amherst. They do a contractual service delivery where. They may not be getting a hundred percent of what it costs them to run into those towns. But they're sure getting more of it than they would have been if they'd been doing it for free. And, um. This may be one of those places where. Chris's close relationship with at least one of the town managers that surround your, your neighbor. Uh, might, might come in helpful. That may be an interesting conversation to go have and to say, hey, Needham, Wellesley, Natick, Medfield. That may be an interesting conversation to go have and to say, hey, Needham, Wellesley, Natick, Medfield. What do we do? What like, why don't we get together and go have a conversation with our friends in Dover about what we are doing collectively? To provide service to a community that based on, I would assume, average house cost could probably afford to deliver some services above the level that they're providing it today.
I don't want to derail this process. I'm just want to make the point that that, yeah, we are, we've been a full delivery for quite a while. And full disclosure, Travis, as I'm sure you know, uh, Amherst does some forty-three minute runs to those communities.
They do, and the run is not, it's not just the run up to Pelham. That's the problem on the road that is, I don't think I've ever actually seen entirely paved from two oh two all the way down to Amherst that any particular given time. Is it now fully paved?
Yes, it has been for a long time. I'm a graduate of Amherst High School, Travis.
Let's go, let's go take a ride out there and go see what it looks like after the rain that they got.
Stay on track. Um, Rob had a a question. I'm going to stay on track.
Yeah, no, just a point, you know, in terms of staying on track, you know, the the elephant in the room is being talked about is a funding solution doesn't change the baseline call volume and or what the trend, which then factors into staffing and or size of buildings and facilities. So that's, I believe, we have on 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 a plate. I think the conversation has been interesting in terms of a potential a a way to address that. But I I would suggest that we move to, you know, understanding more about the study and having the conversation focused around staffing and facility.
And tho- those runs into other communities are in that workload. They're in those workload numbers. So if you were to take those out, let's say you subtract those, whatever that number is, you subtract them. All that's going to do is make your average runs per day in the town of Westwood drop. They're they're not going to go up as a result.
Well, we'd
Just as a point.
We'd like you to get back to us, Travis, um, on on all of the additional data. Including looking at or giving us data on uh, what the expected trends uh, are going to be, what that trend line is. Um, and hopefully you can be back uh, with us for our August fourteenth meeting. We'd really like to continue. This is a very high priority for us. Um, are you available?
I am.
Excellent, excellent. Um, uh, we do want to move on and ask some questions of Doran Whittier, but Joe and Rob, any other questions for Travis at this time?
Oh, I'm good.
Rob, you're good? Okay, all right. Well, let's uh, let's move on to the feasibility uh, with Doran Whittier. Um, and you know, obviously, um, the two reports are interrelated. We appreciate your your input um, with respect to the uh, the room for growth um, that you've uh, put in your uh, report. Uh, I I guess one question uh, I have is, um, you know, relative to the current station one. You mentioned the challenging uh, site topography there. Can you talk a little more about that and and how that might impact a a new construction there?
Well, I I think it it's challenging for anything you put there, right? Just because of the the extreme grade change. It's not insurmountable. I mean, there's a, there's a building there now. We we know the issues that have occurred there. But the the approach here is a little different with with this building, knowing where we are from a modern technology perspective. Uh, how we can, how we can utilize the site. How we can still make it accessible uh, to the public in the uh, in the membership. So while it it's just challenging because of the topography, it can be overcome and you can have a very successful building uh, located there. Not sure if that answers your question, but um.
If I could add, the 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 program also really kind of maxes out the site um, in terms of the allowable square footage that's left to be used um, from the setbacks. We're we're almost setback to setback. So not only is the topography a challenge with large apparatus um, having to go up and down potentially um, a steep grade change. But also we're lot line to lot line. So it's a lot of program and we're able to fit it in there. But it is certainly a bit of a challenge.
One of the uh, one of the one of the benefits of the grade change, though, although Jason says it does go setback to setback, we can fit the program with keeping the height lower and more kind of in line with that residential height, whereas if we were doing a three height, three story structure from grade, uh, you would see all of that. It would be a much larger building in stature um, from the street view. So it does have some benefits. Um, and then from a site perspective, there is the outlet in the back um, out to Hillcrest Drive, I believe. That actually does also provide some helps manage some of the access. But you know, that it's just another point of like, it's it's an opportunity there as well.
But but keep in mind, we're we're only, we're only talking about putting the maintenance down below. The maintenance bay.
Correct.
So we don't, we don't have apparatus running.
We wouldn't be apparatus going out the back. That was more um,
Right.
For for, yes, civilian vehicles.
A- a- and I just to follow up on the topography, you know, obviously that was a concern with Pine Hill with respect to the ledge. And we weren't sure. And there was a lot of public discussion about that, you know, what were we going to encounter? Uh, is is that part of the concern? Um, or or is it the the grading?
No, it is. It's really great. And we we haven't done any geotactical work. It's it's essentially a developed site, right? With a with a a full story basement and above above grade construction there. So uh, we're going to be filling in the hole that if if a new option is the way to go forward, we'll basically be filling in the hole, making it a little bigger uh, than what's there now. So it's not like we'll still do our due diligence down the road, but we don't anticipate finding any lights out there. Let's just say that.
I have other questions, but I'll 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 turn to my colleagues for your questions first.
Sure. Um, just in terms of the the future growth and and how, what are the underlying assumptions behind that, right? Because there's great variability in terms of how much um growth there is relative to the space needs, like the visitor area has like twenty-six percent future growth built into that. You know, obviously, the operation side of things where, you know, the equipment is the equipment doesn't need to have nearly as much new growth built in, but you've got about ten percent seeming assumption of future growth in what I'll call the the living area. So um, what what were some of the the underlying assumptions with respect to new growth, future growth?
Yeah, it it and for the the public areas that you mentioned, one of those being um, the largest um, training rooms um, in order to accommodate proper training that can't be accommodated now and some growth in that in terms of being able to bring other communities in. Um, and that's an opportunity where you can actually uh, charge other departments to come in to do training. Um, and you would have the ability to then get that training for free by hosting it. Um, so having that additional um, capacity for training is one of those drivers there in in the public area, why that's bigger uh, than some of the other areas. So we wouldn't expect staffing to necessarily increase at that same rate. But for training, that's important. In terms of the training itself, a lot, I'm sorry, staffing itself, that's a lot based on conversations with Travis, conversations with the chief. And uh, call volume, where those those trends are expected to go.
Thank you.
Joe, any questions?
I'm good. Thank you, Mary Ann.
Okay. Uh, just to follow up. So with respect to the four options, what I heard you say is that renovating uh, is is not attractive uh, for a number of reasons. And uh, the site behind Starbucks uh, is is unattractive because it's it's landlocked. The town owns property, but unfortunately, we we don't have access to it um, as it stands. So that leaves us with the other two options uh, that are appear to be most ideal from the response time perspective, which of course is critical here, which is uh, the existing site and Town Hall, the existing Town Hall site. And and you did provide us with the slide, but I'm wondering if you can say more uh, about comparing um, those two sites and and the relative uh, you know, pros and cons of those two sites.
Sure. Do I do I want that one or?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll I'll let you start.
Yeah, I know. I was just gonna say, so um, relative pros and cons of those sites. I mean, the the existing site, you know, it it currently is the site and we would need to provide temporary accommodations comparable to the Town Hall. We would need to find a temporary location for Town Hall if we were going to use that site. So both of them have a a need for kind of that third uh, a auxiliary site, if you will, to manage um, the the construction process. One of them will be building the solution on the current site. The other one would need a final solution from the town for for the Town Hall. And I know that's not something that was currently being discussed and it kind of came out of the kind of a question that came out of the study. Um, but from a site perspective, again, they both fall in the response time. There is a a benefit, you know, um, in some people's eyes to have a a formal campus for public safety, uh, which you would get at the Town Hall site. But there is the the known location um, of the current site that's kind of also benefit. And you have, you know, you've that whole high street is pretty developed um, in both directions, more so in the kind of south of the current station. Um, so I think there's I think both 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 sites can accommodate kind of the structure comfortably. And we know that the program works involved.
And maybe maybe the the bigger question is, what would you like to do with Town Hall? Is, right, is is is, we we know Town Hall needs needs work, needs major renovation uh, at a minimum. But it's also shall I say, a beloved structure uh, in town, probably by many. So that's something that would need to be mitigated also. Uh, not to say that that also even with needing a temporary either fire station or Town Hall. If if you have a temporary fire station for building on the existing fire station site, great, when you're done, you're done with the temporary facility. If you do it with Town Hall, you still need to figure out what you're going to do with Town Hall. Right? So uh, major expense there.
Mary Ann, can I follow up on the YMCA site?
Sure.
Um, and and I agree, I I I wouldn't want to touch Town Hall either. But uh, Pat, you were on the select board and uh, you graciously put me on a committee to look at selling some of the land uh, to that site. And if I'm not mistaken, I'm pretty sure Tony was pretty clear with me that we were going to keep a ten foot strip to keep access to that back area. I don't like it. I I just want to make sure we have a
Joe, I don't, I don't recall keeping a ten foot strip. Uh, we may have taken an easement for ten feet, but I don't, I think we sold the whole property and and that property is where the the uh,
Eye doctor is.
Eye doctor is, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's been there for a long, uh, it's probably twenty years now.
Yeah, yeah. But I remember Tony saying to me that when we picked the eye doctor, that they were going to keep access to that site.
I I think we took an easement to be able to get up and back. But it's certainly not enough for to access a a fire truck through.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions, Rob or Joe? Uh, we do have a a public uh, question, question from a member uh, from Fran Fusco, Twenty Pine Lane. Uh, our fire chief is a data guy. I'm very surprised this study does not have the data one would expect. This study is already outdated. The town is rezoning to allow fifty acres, eight hundred seventy apartment units. Uh, this will undoubtedly affect the staffing level in a negative way. How will Criterion include this important information in the study? Well, I I think uh, Fran, um, a- as you've heard, we've uh, pressed uh, Travis for uh, additional data so that we can take into account uh, what the trend line is. Um, so that we can make uh, informed decisions on this. Uh, but thank you for that. Uh, and we also got another question from Kathy Wallace, Two Eighty Three Farm Lane. I am extremely frustrated by the lack of pertinent data and have been since six fifteen twenty-three. I made this known at that time. This process has taken too long. In twenty thirteen, eleven was the recommended staff level and was never attained. When can residents expect to see a minimum of eleven staff in each working group twenty-four seven as recommended by the operational study? Will this minimum of eleven be achieved with new hires? Okay. Well, Kathy, I I would say this, that uh, first of all, we need to better understand wh- what the data is. And I think we're with you on that. So we're going to make a a decision after we've seen the data and we understand it and we have a perspective on that. And uh, I have another question from Fran Fusco. Twenty Pine Lane, can residents expect that new hires will be certified paramedics on their start date? I I I'm not prepared to answer that, uh, Fran.
Uh, can I offer one one observation about that?
Sure.
You you are surrounded by communities that have staff openings for paramedics that cannot fill paramedic vacancies. It is a significant issue, not just in the Commonwealth, but across the country. There you you've got literally adjacent communities that are carrying vacancies that pay well, that are nice places to work that um, that can't fill those vacancies. It's a, it's a ma- it's a massive challenge.
Oh, thank you for that input. Uh, look, I I I know it's getting late. This is a an important conversation. Oh, I think we might have another question. One more question here, Kathy Wallace. Will there be a fall town meeting? When can we expect to break ground with a new fire station? There's been no uh, decision with respect to a a fall town meeting. I certainly can't answer the question of uh, when we could expect to break ground. Uh, because we've got to make our decisions uh, sequentially and in open meeting uh, fashion and compliance with the law. That said, uh, this is a priority of the board, which is why we're having this discussion tonight. Uh, and which I'm going to suggest that we continue to our next meeting on August fourteenth. Joe and Rob, just want to check in with you on that. I think Travis uh, has committed uh, to being with us on August fourteenth. Could we um, have uh, some folks from Doran Whittier with us at our August fourteenth meeting?
Absolutely.
Wonderful. We would very much appreciate that. Give us a a chance to uh, digest what we've heard tonight. Um, I think Travis, uh, the sooner that you can get us the additional data we've discussed tonight, uh, as far in advance as you could uh, would be extremely helpful. Uh, and thank you in advance for that. Joe and Rob, does that seem like a reasonable approach?
It does. I would I would echo the sooner the better on the data.
Absolutely.
Sounds great.
Great. Jeremy, one more comment in the queue?
Oh, thank you. I did not see that. Uh, Fran Fusco, Twenty Pine Lane, what is the stated minimum that the department can drop down to? Previously, it was nine during the day and eight at night. What does the contract specify? Can somebody help with respect to that issue?
I I can answer that if you'd like. I I can answer that if you'd like. So the the contract currently calls that we can go down to six members. Um, we have not done that. We don't ever plan to do that. It just doesn't work as we've all seen, so. Um, but the contract will allow us to go down to six members.
Thank you very much, Chief, for that. All right, well, I think this concludes uh this very substantive discussion. I want to thank all of you uh for being here uh so late. Uh, on a summer night. Thank you very much for uh all of the work that has been done to date, and we look forward to. Continuing the discussion with you in August. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thanks, all be safe.
All right, with that, well, we've got a couple more agenda items. Um, and we have Stephanie McManus with us, our uh finance director uh for uh. A discussion on fiscal year twenty-three year-end close. Welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you. Um, I I will try to make this as brief as possible. Um, so each each fiscal year, there is a year-end closeout process. It's a heavy lift, but it's a very important process and that involves coordination from our departments, all of our department heads. Our entire finance department, in particular, our town accountant, who along with her staff has done a fantastic job. Uh, once again, for the FY twenty-three year-end closeout. So throughout the year, the finance department monitors the budget, uh, including activity versus actual budget for all. Department expenses. Any issues or problems are highlighted and then addressed with any necessary funding adjustments. So throughout FY twenty-three, the select board has addressed uh any issues so far by approving transfers. From the select board reserve account as well as approving Article Two transfers that were made at the May twenty twenty-three Town Meeting. So to date, uh, the board has previously authorized FY twenty-three transfers from its reserve fund. For a total of a hundred and forty-two thousand. Of the two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar budget for FY twenty-three. So uh, tonight, the item in particular. Is just final action needed to close out the FY twenty-three municipal budget. So we are requesting that the select board approve a reserve fund transfer of a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. To be included in the FY twenty-three Fire Department salary budget. Uh, this will close out the fiscal year and it is related to the recently settled contract. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Or question? I'm happy to be done with anything with that contract. What do I need to do?
You you need to second the motion that Rob's about to make, Joe.
I'm ready, Rob, I'm ready.
I move that the select board approved the transfer of the hundred and fifty-three thousand that Stephanie just mentioned from the select board reserve account to close out fiscal year twenty-three.
And Rob, I'll steal your thunder. I will enthusiastically second that motion.
Roll call vote, Joe.
Aye.
Rob.
Aye.
And I enthusiastically vote aye as well. Stephanie, thank you so much for all your work uh and your team as well, all of you. Thank you.
They they've done a great job so far, so thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, um, moving on to old business appointments and reappointments of boards and committees. We still have vacancies on the Cemetery Commission, Historical Commission, Housing Partnership, Fair Housing Committee, and the Westwood Environmental Action Committee. Um, please see the town website for further details, and tonight we have three appointments uh to vote on. Um, the reappointment of Michael McCusker for a one-year term on the Housing Partnership Fair Housing Committee. Uh, with respect to the Denham Westwood Water Board of Commissioners. Um, uh, due to the resignation of James uh Fox, John Hickey. Has been appointed to serve in an interim uh capacity as a commissioner. Uh, the opening was posted on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, and the town received one application from Louis Custwan. Um, and uh Chris Coleman and Blake Lucas met with him on July seventh to discuss the position. And have unanimously recommended his appointment. Uh, Mr. Custwan will be appointed to serve the remainder of Mr. Fox's term until December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. And then for a subsequent three-year term to expire on December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. And lastly, the Recreation uh Commission. Um, also has uh a an opening and Kyle Piché. Uh, has been uh recommended uh for that position with a term to expire on June thirty, twenty twenty-six. Once again, we appreciate everyone who steps up to serve in Westwood and who brings their enormous talents uh to the work of the town. Uh, any questions or comments?
I just think we're very, very lucky to have so many um. Well-qualified volunteers. Mr. Custwan's um resume is uh very fitting for the role that he's stepped up to fill.
Here, here, I second that. I'm not, uh, but I'll accept a motion.
Okay, uh, I think we have to take these in three separate actions. So first, I move the select board vote to reappoint Michael McCusker to serve as a member of the Housing Partnership Fair Housing Committee. For a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
Next, I uh move that we appoint Louis Custwan to serve as commissioner representing Westwood on the Denham Westwood Water Commission to fill a vacancy until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And then for a subsequent three-year term to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
I'll second the motion.
Um, roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Rob.
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
And finally, I move the select board vote to appoint Kyle Piché to serve as a member of the Recreation Commission for a term set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Rob.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Thank you again to Michael, Louis, and Kyle. Um, all right, moving on, next order of business is the approval of our minutes from our regular. Uh, a regular meeting minutes from June twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. Are there any additions or edits to those minutes?
I thought they were perfect, Dish.
Yeah, well done.
As usual, uh, I like, take a motion, Rob.
I vote, move that the select board uh approve the regular meeting minutes from our June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Second.
Roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Rob.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Uh, that leads us uh to public impress. And we've been fortunate to have a a number of you al- already uh communicate with us. I'll give it a a second here. I'm not seeing anything in the queue. Um, so I will move on to announce that our next meeting is Monday, August fourteenth at six PM via remote participation. Uh, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Uh, thank you, everyone, um, for uh. Your uh engagement in in what was a long but in very important meeting. Uh, so thank you for that, and uh I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
My dogs and I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Rob.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Thank you so much, everyone.
Kudos, Marian. Know you weren't feeling well, and the same to you, Chris. Uh, you guys look pretty wounded. Get a good night's sleep.
Thanks, Joe. I'll take it.